I want to welcome everybody to the September 19th, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And this morning, we're blessed to have Pastor John Schubert from Living Hope Lutheran Church lead us in the opening vacation, followed by the pleas of allegiance. So those who are able, if they are willing or wish to, can stand.
Good morning, and let's pray. Heavenly Father, you have provided for us in such incredible ways. You have blessed us with our families and the people in our lives. You've blessed us through your son and his incredible gift to us. You've blessed us with this great earth and our corner of it here in Cobb County. And I pray your blessing upon the meeting today and decisions that are made about this corner of your kingdom. And Lord, I pray that each and every one of us would love you more and love each other more, and we certainly pray for more and more of your peace here on this earth. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
My pleas of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. John, I believe this is where I pass it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify they are here also, so they can be accounted for in the official record. Then after the county of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There is not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board of Commissioners will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. After that, the Board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the matter that's being discussed. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn, would not be heard today. That's Other Business Item Number 42, Walton River Bend LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice, would not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held that would not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z12, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z12 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z27, Ameritech LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z27 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z34, Josh Thompson. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z34 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z44, Meritage Homes of Georgia LLC. That case has been continued by the Planning Commission until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z44 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z45, Traiton Homes LLC. That case was continued by the Board of Commissioners until the October 17th, 2017 zoning hearing. So Z45 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z49, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z49 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z52, Century Communities of Georgia LLC. That case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z52 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z53, Bricks Chadwick Capital LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z53 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z54, Kennesaw Corner MF LP. That case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z54 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z56, O'Call Companies LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z56 will not be heard today. Resounding case, excuse me, Special Land use permit number eight, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEPA would not be heard today. SLEP9, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP9 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 28, SMB Investments Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the October 17th, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 28 would not be heard today. Finally, Other Business Item Number 40, Pulte Home Company LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the October 17th, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 40 would not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's consent agenda which needs to be continued. That's resounding case Z47, Hernan G. Guerrero. I believe the applicant is present, but this case needs to be held for some further work, Mr. Chairman, Board.
District 4?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we hold case Z47 until our next zoning hearing.
Second.
A second discussion, call the question. Hello? Pass the 5 to 0.
I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cell phone, please turn off the volume. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If, within the two years of immediately proceeding the filing of a resoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table at the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to the Board of Commissioners the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their discretion. Lastly, I would like to announce that Community Development has a monthly newsletter. Its publication will host a variety of updates from each division of Community Development, including zoning. It is packed full of useful information and serves as a valuable resource for everyone in Cobb County. And more information about this can be found on the Cobb County website. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one request for an early head count. If I get a show of people here who are opposed to Other Business Item Number 16, Lidl U.S. Operations LLC, please raise your hands. Keep them raised. Thank you.
We're going to move this case up to the first case right after consent. So that's what we're talking about up here.
Dr. Records show there are 49 people here in opposition. And just to be fair, can I get a show of people here who are in support of Other Business Item Number 16? Please raise your hands. Dr. Records show there are six people here in support of Other Business Item Number 16. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Resounding case Z48, Shine &amp; Drive LLC, request a rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store with fuel sales in land lots 29 and 328 of the 19th and 20th districts. The property is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Martin Ridge Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Revised letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated August 31st, 2017, including a site plan with the following changes. To item number 10, delete in its entirety. Staff comments and recommendations with the following modifications. A, for a convenience store with self-service fuel sales and car wash use only. The car wash will adhere to all county and state ordinances, standards, and regulations. B, no onsite automotive repairs. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z48? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Mr. Peterson, I have a question about this.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Samms, could you come forward, please? Thank you. I just had a couple of clarifications, make sure we're on the same page.
Sure.
In your letter dated 8/31, you mentioned an item 6B and 6D privacy fence. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we also noticed, subject in this stipulation letter, site plan, but I didn't notice the privacy fence on the site plan, so I would like to have final approval of the site plan when it comes in, if that's all right.
Certainly. I think there was just a layer turned off when our landscape architect redid the revised site plan. So we'll do that, show the fence on it, consistent with the stipulations.
Okay. And just have me take a look at it, if you don't mind, when you get it.
Certainly. Absolutely.
Thank you. And item D, you said, "Consider a different fence in landscaping." You're working with the developer of the OSC next to it to make sure that everything's okay.
Yes, Mr. Gunther has served as the conduit between Skip Harper and myself, and so we established a dialogue with respect to the need on, which would be the east side of the property.
Okay. So when that, that would be on the final site plan, and that I would take a look at it, correct?
If it's determined is necessary by the county's arborist and all the parties, yes, sir.
Okay, fine. If you're agreeable with that, then I'm agreeable with you.
What about the, I know there's nobody on the north side right now, though, is there? That's just open space?
That's included. No, that's OSC's going to be there.
Mr. Harper recently got that rezoned, Mr. Chairman, to OSC.
Right. I'm just, on these other, is there going to be buffers around here, though, on the west side and north and south sides?
This is.
Right, this is the lot right here. It's a gas station on Dallas Highway. So is there going to be a buffer on this side?
That's what they're working with on the development.
Okay, all right.
There would be a privacy fence and/or buffer vegetation, depending on what we work out.
Correct. And with respect to any specimen or trees that should be saved according to the arborist, then we'll meander the fence accordingly.
I can't recall, but when we approved the OSC, I believe the north part, there is some houses there, correct?
No, sir. I think that's the, that's the open space component of that, of that development.
Okay, so, all right. So there's probably not going to need anything other than what's already there. The natural vegetation and privacy fence.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because...
But the east side's one in question.
Right. But eventually, like this lot right here, that's, that property owner owns that whole lot right there, right?
No, that's the OSC. That's all part of the OSC.
Okay.
And that's part of the green space in the OSC, so it can be touched.
Okay.
All right. I'm fine with it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Resounding case Z50, Storage Development Group, request rezoning from OS to NRC for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in land lot 709 of the 16th district. The property is located on the west side of Kent Road, north of Silvam Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on July 19th, 2017, with the district commissioner approval reminder modifications. Letter, letters of agreeable conditions, or letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. David Buckle, dated August 13th, 2017, with the following changes. To item number 23, add to the end, developer to install deceleration lanes at both entrances. B, item number 27, add subset D, which reads, "Would be in direct conflict with these stipulations or county code." Applicant to meet Kent Road design guidelines. District commissioner approved the landscape plan and architectural plan. Fire department comments and recommendations. Order and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z50? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP18, Burnt Hickory Church of Christ Incorporated, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare facility in land lot 291 of the 20th district. The property is located on the north side of Burnt Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following. Site plan received by the zoning division on July 6th, 2017, with the district commissioner approval reminder modifications. Daycare-related banner to be no larger than three feet by five feet. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and to approve the traffic circulation plan. Is applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP18? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP10, Storage Development Group, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in land lot 709 of the 16th district. The property is located on the west side of Kent Road, north of Silvam Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning, the zoning division on July 19th, 2017, with the district commissioner approval reminder modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. David Buckle, dated August 13th, 2017, with the following changes. A, item number 23, add to the end, developer to install deceleration lanes at both entrances. B, item number 27, add subset D, which reads, "Would be in direct conflict with these stipulations or county code." Applicant to meet Kent Road design guidelines. District commissioner to approve landscape plan and architectural plan. Fire department comments and recommendations. Order and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP10? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into Other Business cases on the consent agenda. Other Business Item Number 38 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Mr. Bobby El Terrell regarding rezoning application Z24 of 2012. The property is located on the north side of Hawkins Store Road, east of Bell's Ferry Road, in land lot 149 of the 16th district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Retail sales and/or bakery use only. And the applicant would also like to add professional office, Mr. Chairman, Board. Prohibited uses are pond shops, tidal pond, check cashing establishments, convenience store with self-service fuel sales, automotive repair or car sales, parking for vehicles as a primary use, laundromats, massage parlors, and tattoo parlors. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 38?
I just have one question, John.
Yes, sir. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 39 is to consider amending the site plan for armor or design studios for Fork U Concepts regarding rezoning application number 19 of 1978, for property located on the south side of Johnson's Ferry Road, east of East Cobb Drive, in land lot 901 of the 16th district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on August 15th, 2017, with the district commissioner approval reminder modifications. Rendering subject to the approval of the district commissioner. Landscaping to be similar to the properties on either side of the property with the final approval by the district commissioner. If a monument-based sign is used, the rendering will be subject to approval by the district commissioner. If no monument-based sign is used, then the old sign will be removed. Applicant owner to join a pedestrian lighting district when one is formed, according to the Johnson Ferry Urban Design Guidelines. Cobb DOT to review and approve increasing the turn radius at the entrance and exit, if possible. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 39?
Okay, I just have one question, Commissioner Roddick.
Yes, the stipulations are the ones that I talked to East Cobb, and they've talked to the applicant, and everyone's in agreement.
Okay.
Other Business Item Number 41 is to consider a, is to consider approving the site plan for J. Blair Waldron regarding rezoning application Z149 of 1998, for property located on the north side of Roswell Road, west of East Piedmont Road, in land lot 986 of the 16th district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on August 15th, 2017, with the district commissioner approval reminder modification. Rendering subject to approval by the district commissioner. Detention pond will be fenced with a six-foot vinyl-coated black-green chain-link fence, with addition of evergreen plantings provided for screening. The final landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner. If any concrete structural, structure is visible from Roswell Road, it will be covered in brick or stacked stone. If monument-based sign is used, the rendering will be subject to the approval of the district commissioner. Write-in, write-out design and signage for Roswell Road entrance to be determined during plan review, and subject to Cobb DOT approval. All G.DOT recommendations concerning the entrance recommend Georgia DOT permits for all work that encroaches upon the state right-of-way, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 41? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
And John, just for the clerk's information, the stipulations are a little bit different than what's in the stipulation letter. So if they'll mark on page two of the stipulation letter, item number seven, by mutual agreement with East Cobb Civic Association, we're crossing out the, is subject to prior review and input by the representative of East Cobb Civic Association. We're going to have that discussion outside, but it's not going to be part of the stip letter. The stipulations say that, but the letter, so just so that everything says the same thing.
And I guess, looking at the ECCPA's comment sheet, the concern, two concerns that I saw that they had was one about rendering the drawing for the, for the building.
And that's in item number seven that I just referenced in this stip letter.
And the other one was the G.DOT's comments.
And what we did was DOT-type things are part of plan review. Because it depended on what G.DOT, when they see the plan and when they talk to our DOT. So I, you know, basically, that's what happens in plan review.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure you address the concerns in the letter.
Okay. All right. Other Business Item Number 43 is to consider granting a special exception for a reduction of lot size and public road frontage, as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their August 9th, 2017 variance hearing. Regarding variance application V79, Russell A. Mullins, staff recommends approval, subject to the minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing for V79 of 2017. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 43? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Russ? He's right there.
Good. We just need to see his hand. Way up there. There he is. Okay, all right.
And that completes the printed consent agenda. Mr. Chairman and Board, there is one case I believe we can add to consent agenda?
Commissioner Roddick has a comment.
Right. I would like to add Z55. John, do you have the stipulations? You want to read them, or you want me to read them?
Let me go ahead and read it in, and then you read the stipulations.
Okay.
Okay. Resounding case Z55, Cookout Restaurants, request rezoning from CRC with stipulations, to CRC with stipulations, for the purpose of a restaurant with a drive-through on South Cobb Drive and retail on Church Road, in land lot 752 and 753 of the 17th district. The property is located on the south side of Church Road, east of South Cobb Drive, and on the east side of South Cobb Drive across from Highlands Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to your resounding case Z55? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay. Then the changes or additions to those stipulations. Item number five in the stipulation letter, the first sentence to read, "Brick enclosure with steel gate or doors," and then revise the zoning category to LRC. And then the next stipulation would be that the lot to be cleared of dead and dying trees, debris, and undergrowth within 60 days of closing of the sale, and the lot properly maintained by the owner until development occurs. Also, stipulation number three would be basically that the steel gate and doors common again. And then there'll be, since there's no specific tenant, the reason for the clearing, keeping it clear, is that it may be vacant for a little while.
Right. And what's the date on the stip letter? I forgot.
August 30th, 2017.
Okay. And the stipulation letter is August 30th, 2017. Kevin, did I get everything that we talked about?
Just, just to clarify, it's the, you can see it on your screen now, the property that's at 2198 Church Road, the smaller piece, which is the .3 acres, is the only one that would be deleted to the LRC category.
Right.
Because the other one...
Right. So just for the Board of Commissioners, there's actually two properties that are not connected. They're part of the overall, the previous zoning case that encompassed all of it. So it's basically peeling off the out parcel along South Cobb Drive, and then the small little portion there on Church Road.
Okay. What about the September 13th letter?
That, I thought that was the...
I got August 30th, and I got a September 13th letter.
September 13th is the letter that updated from the, there was an August 30th letter that we presented to the Planning Commission, and they, the Planning Commission recommendation had several changes to the letter, and we incorporated all of those into the September 13th letter.
Change it to the September 13th, 2017 letter, with the changes that I mentioned, if they're not already in his letter.
Just to have a clean letter, and so...
Okay, just curious. And the other part is, you need to educate me here, because I'm, I'm an old guy. I understand that part of the reason they, when they, this land had to be, they had to buy both lots. I get that part, okay? What I understand is why we didn't have two separate cases for this case. One on Church Street, all right, and then one on, on South Cobb Drive. Because now we're, we're making, we've got two different zoning categories, and I think they'd have broken them down into two separate cases, they'd have been a lot cleaner. I don't think it'd have been an issue about consent. I'm just curious as to why we're, you know, we're putting them together. Is that a common practice?
It does happen.
Accepted practice?
It does happen from time to time, Mr. Chairman, especially when your property's that are owned by the same people that are being zoned at the same time for similar use.
Yeah, but one's got a LRC and one's got a...
Well, but they originally applied for CRC for both.
Right. But now one's going to be an LRC.
Right. It's a little bit less intense because it's on Church Road. That's the only reason.
I have no, I have no opposition to what we're doing. I just think, for the purpose of clarity, I'm just curious as to why we didn't break those into two cases.
Well, I think just in Johnson's events, it was when it was first applied for, it was the same zoning category by the same owner at the same date.
Right.
But in the process of talking to the community and working out their details and seeing that it would work with the applicant, the request was made to make the Church Road part LRC. But at the time of application, they were going to be the same zoning category.
Right.
And so everything was more, it's really just more recently that the LRC came into play.
So more than likely, if this had been two separate zonings, it would come in in two separate cases as best as...
Yes. If it had been, if it had been filed as a CRC and an LRC, it would have been two separate. But because it came in as both CRC, they came in together.
Well, for one thing, I'm giving you more business by having two separate cases, so you should be shaking your head saying, "That's a good idea."
So the other thing is, too, I mean, this whole site, also, Mr. Chairman, this whole site was one big zoning, and it was underneath a whole bunch of conditions and stipulations.
I, I got, like, I have no problem with the zonings, all right? I just think that because they aren't connected, they're not co-joined, it seems like we're just sort of pushing this through, particularly once we change the zoning at this hearing, okay? And just conveys an image that, that the public, because they don't, they're not involved in the details as much as its commissioners are, at a glance, it might seem like we're doing something here, like...
Actually, the LRC was from the public. That was a public input.
Okay, all right.
So in this particular, I would agree with you, but in this particular case, it was the public's request to go to LRC.
Okay, all right.
Right.
All right. And then my last case, my last point, and this goes, where's Dana? Dana here? Yeah. Yeah, raise your hand, right. I, I'm going to just say this, I guess maybe we always have every case, although in this case, there's two of them. We have a paragraph where the staff says that this zoning is not, this time they use an adverb, they're getting good, all right, "is not entirely in conform with the policy of the comprehensive plan." And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. I think our job as a staff is to defend our policy. If, if, if it doesn't meet the criteria of our policy, as much as we might like to support as much as we might like to support it, that's not our job. Our job is to support the policy and then let the board decide whether or not they're going to agree with the policy or not. So I just have real issues with the staff in one paragraph saying it doesn't support the policy and then you get down to the bottom, but they're going to approve it. It just doesn't, doesn't, in my world, it doesn't make any sense to do it that way. All right, so I think because I have no problem with the zoning issue itself, all right, on a matter of principle, I'm going to oppose this because it goes back to, again, my, my constant issue that the staff's job is to support the policy and then, all right, even if they say that we like the idea, we have to, we have to not recommend approval because it doesn't support the policy. So I just want to be very clear about that, that I have no problem with what you're doing here as far as the whole use of the land. But I'm just trying to convey a message only as I can in a public forum that I just think that we need to be very clear here that we as a board, we as state, the federal government has policies and it's not our job to disagree or disagree with them. Our job is to support those policies until they're overturned or revised or deleted. So I just want to make sure you understand that, Commissioner Rott.
No, no, that's fine. John, let me ask you a question. What would staff's comments have been if it had come in as a CRC and an LRC? Would that have changed staff comments? Because my guess is that staff comments are because of the CRC on Church Road.
That's correct. But, but again, we have, because we have two different lots, you're using one lot to support your argument, but it doesn't support the other argument of the other lot. It just creates confusion in the mind of the, I think of the public and in my, my mind. So I just have clean issues.
No, I understand what you're saying and I think that that's part of the reason why the community came back and said LRC is better than CRC because, and I think staff would have then not had made the comment they made. I mean, I understand what you're saying about staff saying one thing in one part and recommending something different in another, but that's part of the reason for the change.
In this particular case, when they use the word entirely, it's because one of the lots conforms with the future lineage map and one of the lots does not conform with the future lineage map. So it created a very confusing scenario where we, if we said it was in conformance, we would have been wrong. If we said it would not have been in conformance, we would have been wrong. So we tried to lay it out to show the two different scenarios between the two different lots to help educate the community and the board about what's happening.
There are five criteria that you go through and four of the five, it meets. Of these five, you recommended, correct? Like Stenberg criteria.
Yes, sir.
So four out of five, and the one that is partially is because there's two different lots.
This was a very confusing case because of the two-lot scenario that made it difficult for zoning staff in their review of it because of the different scenarios for each lot, sir.
But one of these doesn't necessarily mean a denial, correct? One of the five?
The.
Recommendation of a denial.
The, the code of Cobb County says that there are five different factors that should be taken into consideration during all zoning cases.
And one doesn't trump all, correct, necessarily from staff's point of view?
If, if the, we by code have to review all five criteria.
Understand that, okay.
What he's saying though is if you, if it meets four out of the five, does that one five, you know, argue for the denial? And I think your point would be, it depends on what that issue would be.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I get that part.
That's what I'm trying to say there.
If it was, you know, if it, I'll give a good example, and this is a far-reaching example, but I think it's a good example. Let's say we have an industrial piece of property. It's an heavy industrial district, but they want to put a waste transfer station next to a residential neighborhood. All of the criteria may say that it might meet the criteria. However, the impact that resident, neighboring residential community may result in staff having a negative interpretation of it based upon that one criteria, even though the other five. And then there's the opposite case like this one where one of them or half of one of them doesn't meet the criteria, therefore staff recommended approval based upon that.
Right, and like I said, that was the whole reason for making the changes today was to fix the problems that staff was dealing with.
No. Okay, so I think we've added all those issues, so we're going to, we're going to vote on the consent agenda, I think, correct? We're ready? Or do we have to add this, we have to get approval to vote, add this to consent agenda, right?
So vote to add it.
Right, so that's Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burrow has a point.
I just have one question. On the CRC side is where the cookout is going.
Correct.
But on the LRC, is retail shops, do, is that coming back to the district commissioner for approval? Because I didn't see a.
The elevations are. Yes, yes.
I didn't see that.
That was part of what we added.
Okay.
Okay, so Commissioner Rott?
I make a motion to add Z fifty-five to the consent agenda per all the, do you want me to read it all again, John?
Did this, did this.
Parks, you have all the stipulations, right?
Second.
You have a second and discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. And now I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and revised.
And you're going to vote against fifty-five?
Well, let's, yeah, I'll make that note that I'm proposing fifty-five. So I have a second?
Second.
You have a second and discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero with Commissioner Chairman Boyce in opposition to fifty-five.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is John Peterson. For the record, I'm the zoning division manager. Other business item number sixteen is to consider amending the site plan for Lidl U.S. Operations LLC regarding rezoning application Z two twenty-three of nineteen eighty-eight and Z ninety-five of nineteen ninety for property located at the northwest intersection of Shalaford Road and Gordy Parkway and land lots three thirty-five and three eighty-six of the sixteenth district. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned in nineteen ninety-eight to general commercial as part of a larger mixed-use rezoning case. It was developed as a movie theater and has been used as such for the past twenty-five years. The applicant would like to demolish the movie theater and replace it with a Lidl grocery store. The proposed grocery store would be one-story with thirty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-two square feet with one hundred and seventy parking spaces. By way of comparison, the existing movie theater is approximately thirty-four thousand square feet with three hundred and eighty-one parking spaces. The applicant's use, is a permitted use within the GCE zoning category and it is a common use. The site plan submitted meets all zoning criteria for the GCE zoning district and the applicant has been working with the existing Architectural Control Committee that has overseen the area for the past twenty-five years, maybe thirty years. If the site plan amendment is approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan amendment. Earlier, there was forty-nine people opposed and six in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Just leave it up there for a second. Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Soffin, Law Firm of Sam's Larkin-Huffin Valley, and I represent Lidl and the property owner in relation to this other business agenda item. And, and this is quite frankly is a, and should be a very routine matter. The property was zoned in nineteen eighty-eight and thirty years ago with a master site plan. And the site plan has developed over the years and, and some of the development has been consistent. Some of it has been inconsistent with that site plan. For example, the site we're talking about is showing up on your board there is an existing movie theater. The original zoning from nineteen eighty-eight showed a fifty-six thousand square foot building on that property. And what was actually built there was approximately forty thousand square feet with, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, it was, excuse me, a thirty-four thousand square feet movie theater with three hundred and eighty-one parking spaces. Property is owned general commercial. The use of the property is not an issue at all before you. This is only a technical requirement of review and approval of the site plan. Your staff did a great job of explaining that the site plan meets all of your technical requirements. So your decision today is limited to one of two things. One is to either approve the site plan as we submitted or number two, tell us specifically what objective change needs to be made to the site plan to garner approval. And that objective criteria needs to state very clearly what code section you're relying upon for us to make those changes. I know that there's significant community concern because they'd like to keep their movie theater and I understand that concern, but that is not an issue for this board today. The changes to the site plan, we've worked with your staff very well and the significant changes are all for the positive. Let's talk environmental. As you can see from the aerial photograph here, it is a huge parking field with no tree islands in that parking field. Also, development regulations in nineteen eighty-eight had zero water quality requirements and we will be adding water quality features and landscape islands throughout the parking area. The amount of pervious, the amount of pervious material on the property will increase by over half an acre will increase with pervious because we are reducing them a number of parking spaces from the existing three hundred and seventy-nine spaces to a hundred and eighty spaces. That is all positive. We also had a lot of dialogue with your DOT and we were asked last time to conduct a full traffic study. We've done that full traffic study and my engineer Hunter Hyde is here can answer very detailed questions about that. And I'll get up, have him come up here and confirm that the engineering, that the levels of service at all intersections are not impacted. There are also significant improvements to the existing traffic and access points that we are making at the recommendations of Cobb DOT. Number one, there's a driveway on the south end of Shalaford Parkway. I mean, excuse me, on the south end of Gordy Parkway at Shalaford, right there. Just a little north, a little north, a little north, no, no. On Gordy Parkway at Shalaford. The hand, keep going north, keep going north, hand, keep going north, north the other way. The south. Anyway, the driveway on the southern end of that property, as you can see on the site, right there, yes. That driveway is going to be removed. It is too close to the Shalaford driveway, the Shalaford Road intersection. And Cobb DOT said, would you remove that driveway so we have, don't have conflicting turning movements that close to the intersection? So we are removing that access point. Also, the northern access point, it is now currently full access. And one of the things that came out of the public meeting that we had with the community was there is a intersection on Gordy Parkway north of us that relies upon a flashing yellow light to ensure that cars aren't coming. The left turning movement out of there do not trigger that light. That is a current deficiency. We are correcting that. DOT has asked us to not have a left turning movement out of there and we've agreed to that. Also, the access point on Shalaford Road, the drive aisle is awkwardly shaped and creates an odd turning movement when you enter the site. And again, we asked, DOT asked us, and it's part of their recommendation, that we agreed to do that. I have submitted to you a letter dated August fourteenth which details that this property is owned general commercial, that everything we're doing to the site plan is consistent with the development regulations as confirmed by your staff, that all the changes are actually improvements over the existing conditions and therefore that the, you need to approve the site plans we submitted. And if you do not approve it, it's a pure and simple property rights case. If your conservative jurisdiction believes in property rights, then there is no question here. We believe the damages, and it's spelled out in there, the damages are a thousand dollars a day, in our opinion, as to the withholding simple site plan approval for a building that's the same square footage of the building that there. Keep in mind the use, and there's a good reason why the use is not an issue at all, property is owned general commercial. If the grocery store wanted to go in the existing building without any of these improvements, it could. But we are actually agreeing to make significant improvements that are benefit to everyone. If I go through the, I got a short PowerPoint presentation. Again, this tells you that where the property is. Home Depot across the street, Publix and that shopping center there. This is the original site plan. As you can see from looking at the original site plan, there are significant changes from this site plan to what's built out there now. This is the proposed site plan and you can see the overlayed over that how significant the amount of pervious area that's going to be reclaimed with this site plan with parking islands that will be throughout the parking lot, with the buffering along the perimeter of the property that is now parking area. So the amount of green space greatly increases, again, gives you a better idea of how much more green space is on this site plan. We have been working on an, on a landscape plan that will again show the generous landscaping and how much more pleasing sight that is. And this is the existing movie theater out there. And you can see it's a split block building and that could be converted to any use that's compliant in the GCE category at this time. And this gives you an idea of the parking field and when you looked at the previous aerial, you can really see how stark that parking lot is. So we have worked through this. I do have our architectural picture of the proposed Lidl store, but that's not what's before you today. We're not asking for any, anything related to the approval. I can show you a picture if you'd like. But I did want you to see that the existing building, the existing parking lot is significantly below the current development standards and what will be built out there will be. This time I'm going to ask Hunter Hyde to come up. And all I want Hunter to do is just confirm that your firm completed a traffic study and that the level of service are not impacted by it.
Thank you, Parks. My name's Hunter Hyde. I'm with Wilberton and Associates and we performed the traffic study. And exactly what Parks just said, what the study did reveal was that not only in the existing conditions do the, the six intersections that we studied meet acceptable level of service as defined by Cobb DOT, but in the proposed condition, which takes into account the proposed Lidl grocery store and a growth rate for this area also agreed upon with Cobb DOT, those levels of services at those same six intersections function properly. Just to add a few more details to the results of the study. Again, I mentioned we studied six intersections, which included the, the nearest to our north, the residential intersection just to the north of the property. Again, we coordinated with Cobb DOT, the growth rate, the trip distributions. Before we even conducted the study, we met with Cobb DOT this past week and went through the results, all of which they agreed upon. We addressed their, their comments. We also looked at turn-based storage of the existing intersections, how they might be affected by the development. And they all function or will continue to function properly with one exception, I just wanted to point out, and that's on Shalaford Road. If you're trying to turn left onto Gordy Parkway to head north, that condition is existing. That, that turn bay, left turn bay doesn't have enough storage to accept the existing traffic. Unfortunately, there's a competing left turn lane immediately adjacent to it. So unfortunately, there's not a viable improvement that can be made to make that left turn long enough to accept all of those cars turning left onto Gordy Parkway. Also, as part of our study, we analyzed possible mitigation or improvements that could be made to the Edinburgh Place at Gordy Parkway intersection. After we met with some of the neighborhood, the citizens and to address their concerns, we looked at solutions to present to Cobb DOT. We looked at several options there. One was a mini roundabout. We looked at a, an R-cut, which basically just limit, limit all turns. You can only turn right out of both driveways, which is a common GDOT practice as a possible safety improvement. And finally, we looked at a four-way stop, an all-way stop. And that's what our study recommended Cobb County consider as an improvement, as we feel it would be an improvement. Parks mentioned that there is a site distance issue at that driveway. There's a, there's a flashing beacon that does, it's supposed to alert drivers of cars approaching from the south on Gordy Parkway. However, there's also a site distance issue looking north. And so we feel that a four-way stop would help alleviate that issue or if Cobb DOT is not agreeable to that, at the very least, they should install some additional loops in the pavement that that beacon would pick up. Essentially, it would catch traffic coming both ways, not just from one, to improve the safety for drivers trying to exit from those neighborhoods. And finally, I would just like to add, Parks mentioned the one improvement as far as closing off that one existing driveway on Gordy Parkway, which will improve the queuing, the stacking as folks approach the signalized intersection at Shalaford Road. Additionally, just to clear up.
Excuse me, you're over your time.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
I tell you what, hold on, sir. Excuse me, sir. Tell you what we'll do. We'll give you the extra time, but I'm going to give the opposition the extra time too. Does that work for you? Okay, sorry about that. It's a better plan. Should have thought of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd say one more comment.
That's all right, no. I should have thought of that to begin with.
It was just simply that on Shalaford Road, there's one driveway today. It's a right-in, right-out, limited access driveway. There was some confusion about whether or not we would be proposing to change that driveway. And I just want to state that we are not proposing. The, the location of it that's shown here is what we will maintain. We won't attempt to move it any closer to the signalized intersection. It will remain there. And at Cobb DOT's request, internal to the property, you can kind of see from this view here that it, that it makes a pretty sharp right turn. here that it, that it makes a pretty sharp right turn coming into the site. We will simply straighten that driveway out more, so it'll come deeper into the site before that first turn happens. Just, that just improves the safety of the, of the driveway. That's all. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and give the opposition 11 minutes and 30 seconds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Laura Hickman, and I am a resident of Highland Park, representing concerned neighbors in Highland Park, Highland Terrace, North Hampton, and area neighborhoods near Park 12 Cobb Theater on Gordy Parkway. We realize this property is commercial and will remain commercial. We are not opposed to this being a commercial property. However, this Lidl proposal is entirely too intense for this piece of land. In this area, Gordy Parkway is a two-lane loop road consisting of three neighborhoods in a walkable residential area with over 600 homes. Harrison Park, Sandy Plains Park, and Lassiter High School are within easy walking distance. A grocery store will generate a higher volume of traffic that is more intense and concentrated. This is a different type of traffic than what is now on Gordy Parkway. This will change the flow and traffic pattern seven days a week during morning, afternoon, and evening hours, risking even more accidents on this already highly congested, accident-prone road. We are especially concerned for the young drivers from Lassiter and school buses traveling on Gordy Parkway. The bus stop at Highland Terrace sits extremely close to the proposed truck entrance on Gordy Parkway. Approximately over 20,000 vehicles come in and out of Publix, and 18,000 vehicles come in and out of Kroger every week. The proposed site is on a two-lane loop road in between two county parks and Lassiter High School. Harrison Park is only .05 miles away from this property. Sandy Plains Park is only .25 miles away, and Lassiter High School is only .37 miles away. In regards to the traffic study done in August, the study was not done on a Saturday. This area is a highly commercial center. Traffic volume is high on weekends in this community. There was no traffic study at the major intersections of Gordy Parkway and Sandy Plains Road near Publix, and at the south end of Gordy Parkway and Sandy Plains Road by the Aquatic Center. There was no study done at the major intersection of Sandy Plains Road and Shaliford Road. The study was conducted at a start time of 4:00 PM and did not include the increased traffic when Lassiter High School students are released at 3:30 PM. In Z-223 of 1988, the Gordy Parkway Loop Road was supposed to be a four-lan, four-lane loop road, but was reduced to two lanes near the neighborhoods, parks, and theater. A high-intensity business such as a grocery store would have required four lanes to handle the traffic impact. In fact, a limited warranty deed restricted any grocery store to be built on this land for 20 years. No other Lidl grocery store in the United States has been built on a two-lane residential street. We must ask ourselves why. Vehicles traveling to the proposed Lidl site will have to feed onto the two-lane residential part of Gordy Parkway from the majorly congested four-lane Shaliford and Sandy Plains roads. Lidl would have two customer entrances and one delivery entrance. Since the Shaliford Road entrance is a right-in, right-out due to the median, most customers would enter from the smaller, two-lane residential Gordy Parkway entrance. Publix has six entrances, and Kroger has five entrances, all on four-lane roads. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Susan Herman, and I also am a resident of Highland Park. Daily, we have many pedestrians who all frequently use the sidewalks on Gordy Parkway, including students going to and from Lassiter High School, including before and after-school tutoring and activities, the Lassiter Cross Country Team, tennis, baseball, and softball teams and their families, teens heading to the shops and fast food restaurants, parents with baby strollers, residents from neighborhoods, and walkers and runners. Additionally, there are weekend and evening sporting activities at Harrison and Sandy Plains Parks that people walk to. Encountering a huge increase in vehicles will be extremely dangerous to all of the pedestrians. Gordy Parkway will no longer be a safe place to walk in a community that prides itself on being progressive and physically active. Lidl will bring more intense traffic, noise, and light pollution to our adjacent neighborhoods. This includes noisy 18-wheeler semi-trucks delivering daily at 5:00 AM to an enclosed loading dock with rolling steel doors, loud refrigerated trucks idling as they unload, trash dumpsters smelling of rotten meat and produce that attract rodents. And surprisingly, a Lidl representative informed us that their delivery trucks also haul away the garbage in the very same delivery trucks that they delivered the food in. Neighbors already deal with Home Depot overnight deliveries causing noise and vibrations. We respect the theater company's right to sell the property as owned, but we would like the Commissioners to evaluate the significant difference in the type of businesses that is being proposed. Any modification being considered for the site plan will not make this type of business a good fit for the land use. This road cannot safely handle the dramatic impact on traffic if this business is approved. This would be an excessive burdensome use of Gordy Parkway. We are not opposed to Lidl coming to Marietta, but Lidl can find a more suitable site to better support the additional traffic flow and not compromise the quality of life, home values, and safety of the children and people in this residential community. We respectfully ask that you deny Lidl U.S. Operations the application for other business to change the land use of the property from a movie theater to a grocery store. We have submitting over 800 written signatures in opposition to OB-16 that were collected door-to-door in our residential community. We have two additional statements from residents who had to leave the hearing. The first one is from Robert Rydell. My name is Robert Rydell, and I am a resident of Highland Terrace subdivision. I attended the hearing today and was counted, but I had to leave to go back to work. I am in strong opposition to allow Lidl to build a grocery store in place of Park 12 Theater. My property sits within 100 feet diagonally across the street from the theater property. I would have full view of the store, loading docks, delivery, and store traffic. I am concerned about the increased traffic and accidents that a grocer will bring. I am also concerned that having a Lidl grocer so close to my home will greatly lower my property values. The second one. My name is Richard Davis. I am a North Hampton resident for 16 years and have been on board of the director for several years. I am currently the landscape chair. As I am always surveying the grounds of North Hampton, I have seen many near misses throughout the day. My concern is that Lidl's concept of a 15-minute shopping experience is going to create more rushed traffic, especially during the peak times of when the children are walking to and from school or going to Harrison Park. Drivers already pay little attention to the roads because of their urgency to get to the next place. I would be happy if Lidl came, became part of our community. However, I feel that the corner they have chosen creates more danger to our community than the benefit of a grocery store. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am Trish Steiner with East Cobb Civic Association. ECCA supports neighboring subdivisions in the community in representing and requesting that you deny OB-16. The access point to Lidl would be from a Gordy Parkway, a residential two-lane road that is the only entrance and exit for Highland Park and Highland Terrace. The site plan does not fit with the existing congested two lanes of Gordy Parkway. The traffic this store would create is too intense for the existing road, subdivisions, two parks, and Lassiter High School. The loading dock is contiguous to residential homes. The Architectural Control Committee has not approved this site plan. The time changes twice a year will create additional dangerous situations for pedestrians in the morning and for after-school activities when bus service is not available or provided. This proposed OBI item is too intense for this property. It is not compatible with the neighborhoods, and it will create a negative impact on the quality of life for the existing individuals who visit the two parks, the subdivisions, and the pedestrian traffic on this section of two-lane Gordy Parkway. Please vote to deny this OBI 16 item. Thank you.
My name is David Rumrell, and I'm a resident of East Cobb. Been there for 35 years. I was in District 3 and now am in District 2 due to the redistricting we did. So both Mr. Ott and Ms. Burrell, you are my district commissioners. I consider both of you to be that because of my proximity to the line of the district. There will be some significant traffic changes because of the operations that will go in there with a grocery store versus a movie theater. It will increase the daytime traffic significantly, which doesn't happen that much with the current use of the property. I know this is a difficult decision for the Commissioners. It's another business. It's really not a rezoning. It's just changing the use of existing zoning, and Lidl's attorney has spelled out a, you know, a reasonable case for you. So I have a slightly different approach. There is significant community opposition to putting a Lidl grocery store into that area. If Lidl does come into that site, I will not be a patron of that Lidl. I am a patron of the Park 12 Theater. So I have a request of Lidl that perhaps in view of the significant community opposition of people that Lidl would like to assume would be customers of Lidl, that you withdraw this other business application and look for other properties in the general area where you would like to locate. There is some significant property coming available in a, in, as there's zoning meeting coming up here in the next month or two. The location of the previous Mountain View Elementary School, it's looking to be rezoned commercial, might be looking for a grocery store in that same area. So Lidl, you could actually do the community a favor and perhaps increase your patronage of the store if you would look at the community opposition elements and not just the technical aspects of this zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
On my clock, they went over a minute and a half. I think I have a minute and a half to-
No.
I have 30 seconds.
All right, 30.
Different clocks.
We only have one that counts.
Okay.
The chairman has the time.
I had, I had my timer running, too. The last comment said, you know, we're changing the use. Again, this is nothing to do with changing use. It's a site plan. The site plan is vastly superior than the existing site plan out here. You have to have an objective reason to deny this site plan. You have to ask your staff, the staff, and they also challenged the traffic study. We sat down with your Cobb DOT on the parameters of the traffic study beforehand. We made sure the traffic counts were done when school was in session, and we sat down with them afterwards, and it's my understanding they accept the traffic study. This is not a difficult decision. This is technically a property rights issue, and the site plan needs to be approved. And the comments about traffic and, and being on a two-lane road, I remind you, if you look at the GIS, both Home Depot is, is accessed mainly off Gordy Parkway with Ryanian rights off, off Shaliford Road. So that argument, argument is, is not anything that, that-
Thank you.
-is correct. Thank you.
Sure.
This, not yet. Do you, he wants to know if you want staff's recommendation at this time? I don't.
It doesn't hurt to, it doesn't hurt to hear it.
Put a staff recommendation? That's what you're up there for?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board. Staff would recommend the board of commissioners approve the requested site plan amendment subject to the site plan dated April 11th, 2017, with district commissioner approving minor changes. Staff comments included in the other business packet and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thanks, John. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I would first like to say that I appreciate the Publix's patience through this process. This case has been continued four times. I had a community meeting in June, the beginning of June, with approximately 200 residents and attendants, including Lidl representatives, staff, DOT staff, and the public at the East Cobb Senior Center. Subsequently, I have met with Highland Park, Highland Trace representatives, East Cobb Civic Association case manager, Trish Steiner, as well, and other neighbors. We're, we're not here to consider the nostalgia of the theater property, as property owners do have the right to sell their property. Under the current zoning, the property used as a grocery store is allowed. The other business item being heard is to consider, consider an amendment to the current site plan and the impact to the community. Restrictions on the original zoning for this parcel require Architectural Control Committee review. The committee was established in 1988. There are several other parcels in the area that are subject to the Architectural Control Committee review, and all of them, and I will, I will name them, have had to go through Architectural Control Committee review, and all of them had to revise their original plan to meet the standards for the surrounding area. The PNC Bank, which is an out parcel on the Home Depot side of, of the shopping center across from this, Chick-fil-A, Lassiter on the, in front of Target, the Wendy's, the Kroger Shopping Center, and O'Charley's, all had to go through Architectural Control Review Committee because that's a stipulation on their zonings. So they all had to revise their original plans to meet approval of the Architectural Control Committee. This applicant has met with the Architectural Control Committee three times, three times. And I want to make sure that a letter dated June 1st from the Architectural Control Committee is submitted for the record, again, of the comments on the landscape and the elevations of the building, none were approved. And the landscape plan has not been completed, and that's from the Architectural Control Committee dated June 1st. In addition to the architecture being out of place for the surrounding businesses, this use is too intense to, at this location. At Harrison Park, it's home to seven baseball fields and a tennis center as well. Next to that, you have Lassiter High School. You have many students and neighbors walking and biking in the area. You saw from the photos that Ms. Hickman showed and the others that spoke, the foot traffic, pedestrian traffic, and bike, bicycles in the area. There is a large amount of pedestrian and bike traffic along Shaliford Road and Gordy Parkway. And the fact that Gordy Parkway is only two-lane road, a two-lane road, which is where two of the major subdivisions are right behind there and across from there, there's, is definitely a safety issue for me. are right behind there and across from there, there's definitely a safety issue for me. And the intensity is more for a grocery store that's generally open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. With this close a proximity to the neighborhoods, will not only impact the traffic, it will increase the noise for the neighbors and also lend to health and safety concerns in the area. I also have some crash data that I'd like to share that is kind of alarming. With the stats from the precinct, police precinct that services this area, Precinct 4, we had the entire loop of Gordy Parkway from Sandy Plains, where it starts at the Aquatic Center and Chattahoochee Tech, up to Shalaford, where you have North Hampton on the left, and then crossing over Shalaford, where this parcel is proposed, up to the shopping center where Office Depot and Publix is on the right and Starbucks on the left, up to Sandy Plains. With that crash data for that loop, the entire loop, in 2014, there were 42 accidents reported. In 2015, there were 61 accidents reported. And in 2016, there were 82 accidents reported. And from the beginning of this year, 17 January through May, there were 26 accidents reported. So the past three years, from 2014 till 2017, you've got 211 accidents on Gordy Parkway On the traffic study that was done and with DOT's summary and comments, it's my understanding that there were a total of 130 accidents from May 1 of '14 to April 30 of this year for the past three years. And that segment included the Shalaford Road, Gordy Parkway where Lidl is proposed, up to the shopping center north, to Sandy Plains on the right, and the Starbucks on the left. And Amy and Ashley, can you verify that?
Amy Diaz, DOT, that is correct. That includes those two intersections. That includes crashes that happen along Shalaford or along Sandy Plains at those intersections. But yes, that is all of those.
Included those two intersections. Okay. And you might want to stay up there because while I'm on the accident reports and traffic, I also want to comment on, I understand that in the traffic study that was done for that segment, it doesn't, it does change the level of service in the PM peak hours from a C to a D, not the morning but the PM. However, that is still acceptable as far as the traffic study goes.
Correct.
Okay. But it does, it does change the PM peak period from a C level to a D level.
Correct.
Which may be acceptable under county standards and DOT standards, but for safety and proximity to neighborhoods, I don't agree. So while Amy's up here, does she, you have any?
I have a question. The traffic study that was referenced, Ms. Diaz indicated, done by the applicant, has DOT done a traffic study or we just use their numbers? It's basically the same?
We have done past studies at the neighborhood intersection, but we, as far as the site goes, we use their traffic study like we do for any zoning applicant.
Is there any flaws or fallacies you see in their traffic study?
No, we reviewed it and we agree with the findings. Now, one thing that was mentioned is that there is a site distance limitation in both directions of the neighborhood. That is a comment that, a result that has not been shared with us yet. It came out of the most recent meeting that we just had. So that is something that we will still need to address.
And some of the improvements that the applicant mentioned as far as cutting off access to Gordy and making some changes, those would probably help in some of the accidents, probably.
It could. I mean, you'd have to do an accident evaluation to say for sure.
All the accidents you referenced are currently there and apparently there are issues there whether this goes in or not as far as site distance, traffic intersections, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have any plans to correct those one way or the other?
We, okay, well, at the intersection itself, at the neighborhood intersection, there are only two right at the intersection.
I'm sorry, there was?
Where the site distance issue is, there are two crashes over the last three years. We had a neighbor write in and there's been a third one that was not recorded for this year as yet because we, our data goes through April of 2017 and they had one that they reported for May of 2017. So over the last three years, there's been three, including that one. But we have a vehicle ahead when flashing mechanism there to basically let people know when vehicles are coming. As part of this traffic study, what came out of it, we are going to improve the loops at that intersection. The speed that was found on Gordy Parkway is 41 miles an hour. We are going to adjust the loop positions so that they are further back to capture vehicles more quickly so the people that cannot see them will know that they're coming. And now that we have apparently a site distance issue in the other direction, we'll have to evaluate that as well.
Well, the road appears to be, it's two-lane, but is there a turn lane in the middle or is that?
Yes.
So it's, already have turn lanes to go in and out. Okay, that's what I thought. So actually room to improve it. You can't widen it, but you already have basically three lanes, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, does anything else for Amy? Okay, also, having said all that, I just want to restate the reasons I feel that this is not appropriate in this area. The traffic, the two-lane Gordy Parkway, the access points, all of that to me is too intense for the surrounding neighborhoods, the pedestrian traffic and bike traffic from the school, from the tennis center and the ballfields at Harrison Park and Sandy Plains Park at the other end. You've heard, we've all gotten emails, some in support, but majority in opposition, two to one, that I've received and all the commissioners have received. I feel that Lidl would be better suited in a shopping center with better access rather than a standalone building on a two-lane road. And I probably shouldn't say this, but just for the record, Mr. Rumrell, you can ask Mr. Huff how many times I've asked them to withdraw with the opposition. So with that, I would make a motion to deny other business 16.
We have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. I'd like to take a one-minute break. I need to talk to legal about something regarding...
Before we do our discussions?
Well, that'll be part of the discussion. I want to make sure that my part, so just give me one second. So we have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Weatherford?
Sure. I've taken some extensive notes and as Commissioner Burrell said, we have tons of information and tons of people calling and emailing, et cetera, et cetera, about this. And I just had a few comments. And a lot of the comments and conversations we've had are about, "We don't need another grocery store," et cetera, et cetera. I just want everyone to be clear that it's not this board's ability to work on type of viability. It's only whether it meets our criteria or not. So we're not in the business of saying whether one will work or one will not. So that's not our purview. Fact it's site plan only and the fact that it can already be zoned and built that way causes me to issues. And the fact that staff has approved this and recommends approval, I have some issues with, you know, denying it. I would ask that if there's any way, if it is approved or is it, delivery times can be specified as we do in most other zonings so that we can limit delivery from those different delivery trucks and times of the day. I do remember this time somewhere last year, we approved one in a similar situation. And it seems to me it was a school there and also different things and it felt, this board, the majority felt it was a good place for it to go. So I can't vote to deny or support this application.
Okay. Any other comments? The only thing I have is I'm not sure, we have a process here and if, I'm concerned that, that the applicant has not received approval yet from the Architectural Control Committee. I'm just curious as to why, why that hasn't happened.
We've had dialogue with Architectural Control Committee. We've had several meetings with them. The Architectural Control Committee was set in the original zoning and the original zoning minutes said that the stipulations and conditions that would apply would verbal changes made at the meeting. And the Architectural Control Committee has laid out in there and the Architectural Control Committee is also in the covenants and the covenants have expired. So there are, there is no Architectural Control Committee in the covenants, which in most subdivisions, most commercial developments, you have a termination Architectural Control Committee. Your own county attorney has sent an email that I was copied on confirming that the Architectural Control Committee is not instituted anymore within the covenants. Question is whether they're part of the zoning conditions or whether they were expired in the zoning, just like they expired in the covenants. It's my opinion that they're not. We've tried to work with them. If you can pull it up, pull up the, I want to show you kind of what we're dealing with Architectural Control Committees. Now go, you go through the slideshow. There, there you go. This is the current building that was approved by the Architectural Control Committee. And then let me show you the building that we proposed. This is a proposed building we have. And actually what that is, is the warehouse movie theater reskinned like Lidl. We made significant changes to the Lidl. Their architect, who's been there for 30 years, looked at me and said, "It looks too much like a warehouse." Well, how can I deal with an architect who tells me the movie theater, which you saw a picture of, is more attractive than this? So your county has not involved, been involved in the Architectural Control Committee? In my opinion, the Architectural Control Committee has very, is on very shaky grounds. But we're not asking for you to waive anything to do with Architectural Control Committee, but you asked me a question. Also, we've talked about the landscaping. Please go out there and look at the landscaping and you can see it's basically some, a few pine trees and some pine straw. And we were asked why we don't have green areas, which we do have tons of green area. Our landscaping is going to be more attractive than anything else, any other property out there. The other component to it is the head of the Architectural Control Committee is the owner of the public shopping center and he inherently has a conflict of interest because he doesn't want to see competition come in for his main tenant and his shopping center. So you've got an Architectural Control Committee that has expired in the covenants, that is vaguely referenced in your zoning ordinance, and your own zoning minutes say that those conditions are, were subject to verbal changes at the hearing. I submit to you the verbal changes said that those, the Architectural Control Committee expired. So we've worked with them, will continue to work with them to the extent that they will work with us. But if you think a rational human being or rational judge thinks that the warehouse movie theater is more attractive than the Lidl, and again, go to that Lidl picture. You know what that is? Go to the, yeah, that is the movie theater, bricked. And Commissioner Cupid knows from her district that that is a significant change from their standard prototype and we've made significant changes to try to accommodate them. They have absolutely no standards. I've asked them, "What architectural standards do you go by?" We haven't been provided any. The architect looked at me and said, "We'll know it when we see it." So you can't have, you know, if they give me clear standards, we'll comply with them.
Okay, so the question to Deborah is, does the Architectural Control Committee, is that part of the process we use to approve site plans? In this case, is that, is that applicable in this case?
It is not.
It is not?
It is, it is part of the record here in terms of it having been part of the condition originally.
Of the original site?
Right.
But it doesn't apply for other business, for modifications to a building like this one is?
Well, I mean, I would, I would say specific to this case...
Right. I just want to make sure that...
That it is a consideration. Now, I would question how much information you have about that process before the board to consider in this decision.
Well, I have a letter, I have a letter here somewhere in this file. The real question I have is...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to correct the record. You stated the approval of a building. We're asking for approval of a site plan.
Right, I understand that.
But your staff, not, not building.
I understand that. The question I'm having is, is the Architectural Control Committee still a relevant element of our, of our process? John?
The Architect, the Architectural Control Committee is governed by the zoning conditions from 1988, 1990, so it's still a part of the process, but it's not part of this process.
It's not part of this process?
No. All you're considering is a site plan amendment only.
All right, so that's my point. All right. So that's my point is, on a technical basis, the Architectural Control Committee is not part of the, of the factors that we're considering to make our decision for, for, for another business.
Correct.
So to mention the fact that there has been no approval by the Architectural Control Committee really is irrelevant?
Yes, it is.
Even though it's a zoning stipulation.
It is a zoning.
All the areas, the whole area, the other parcels that I named that had to go through review by the Architectural Control Committee, it's on their zoning too. But however, regardless of their recommendation or no recommendation or approval or no approval, you still have to look at the other crash data and the traffic concerns that to me are, and safety issues that are more important than that. I understand.
Yeah, I just, I understand what, I understand. If you can back up to the microphone. Objectively, I get your argument, okay? It's black and white. The first question I had is, clearly, Lidl could have come in here and just done, just moved in without making any changes to the building.
And that would also include no changes to the site plan, the architect, or the landscaping or the access point. So by actually coming in and changing the site plan, you're getting significant improvements, both environmentally and from a DOT transportation standpoint.
Well, the other part is, doesn't it concern Lidl, the significant opposition to this? I mean, and I say this not, I'm not picking on you. There have been cases that I've seen that have had opposition or support, okay? But this one takes the cake. I, I just, doesn't that factor into Lidl's process about where they want to put it, a store, that there is significant opposition around them by the community?
Lidl listens to the public concern, and we have received several emails, also with people saying, stating that they would like, like have options. I know you've received some of those too. You know, what was not stated clearly is, when we had the public meeting and there's a website, Save the GTC, it's really, the public, they were smart not to get up here and talk about it, but they want to keep the movie theater as much as anything.
Well, there, there has been, the comments that I've seen, and there have been a lot of them, I mean, well over a couple hundred, all right? There are many issues they brought up. Traffic's one, some of them like the theater, they want to keep it there. Obviously, you brought the part, the fact that they want, the board has mentioned this here, that there's no, we're not here to say what kind of business goes in that building, all right? This is called capitalism, free market, and we can't be dictating what goes in there. So, but I guess my major concern here is that, you know, Commissioner, Commissioner Weatherford stated very, very clearly here that there's really no reason objectively to oppose this, but it goes back to what we, what we are, you know, as a country, is that we hear the people. In this case here, we have, I just find it amazing that a company that is as successful as Lidl would not take the fact that there's been so much organized opposition to this into their equation and still insist that they want to do it. Commissioner.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to say anything, and I know Commissioner Burrell finds it hard to believe that I actually agree with her, but the, you know, parks, you know, wants to bring up the fact that by them applying for a change in the site plan, that we're getting the trees and some of these other things. But on the same token, by them applying for a new site plan, they also have to look at the bad. They don't get to just talk about the good things, trees and changing the surface of the, you know, the facade of the building. It's no different than when you add onto your house. When the building inspector comes in, you don't get to say, you do get to inspect this part. A certain amount of work on the house forces the whole house to have to be in compliance with the code. Okay? Yes, they could have come in and not changed the site plan, used the existing building, they still can. But the fact is, that's not what they applied for. Okay? They applied to change the site plan. And with that site plan goes the staff review. Now, staff may have recommended approval, but Commissioner Burrell has pointed out the, the traffic. We, we know that there is site issues in both directions. We saw in the picture there where the delivery trucks are going to have to come in, that is not an easy turn. That is a 90-degree turn. So they're either going to have to widen the entrance. And, and the traffic pictures, I think, speak for themselves. The accident data, you know, whether there's three accidents now or more coming, the fact of the matter is, they submitted a change to the site plan. They did not need to do that. And unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, with the application to change the site plan, we have to consider all of the aspects or implications of that new site plan. And that includes, yes, we get trees, yes, we get a new facade, but we get traffic conditions, we get safety conditions, we have one of the entrances on Shalaford, and so I can't support it, but I would say that I agree with what Commissioners Weatherford's saying, with the exception that they applied for a change of site plan, and that requires us to look at the good, the bad, and the ugly of the plan.
Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Commissioner Ock. Last week, the neighbors submitted for the record to all the commissioners and the clerk's office from the petition that, to save the Part 12. Again, that is not what we're looking at. We can't look at the emotional side of wanting to keep a 20, 30-year-old theater there when the grocery store isn't acceptable use. However, I do have a folder of comments that were pulled from the online petition of 500 or so signatures that do address the traffic and safety concerns. It's not just about saving the theater. As I said in the beginning in my comments, that, you know, the owner has a right to sell to another business as long as it's appropriate. So I, we have a motion to deny in a second, and if there's not any more discussion.
This is probably one of the more painful discussions that I'm bearing on this board because just last year, this board, including the commissioner of this district, supported Lidl coming in District Four under very similar circumstances. Standalone supermarket right next to residential off a two-lane road. Also, there's a four-lane road median right across from a middle school. We had residents come, and District Four, we may not come out in the same number, but that doesn't mean we don't have the same passion for our community. Not only did our residents ask for this not to, to be zoned this way, but there was also verbiage in the comprehensive plan for this county that talked about what the use and the intensity of the particular parcel should be. And the same commissioner asking for support today bypassed the recommendation of our staff and of the community over what intensity of that parcel. It's very difficult because I, as technical as I aim to be when it comes to our zoning cases, I also am very sensitive to what fits in a community and to the voice of a community, and certainly the health, safety, and welfare of a community. I've also been on this board where we've had site plan amendments come and where there have been significant changes to the use, where members of our community have come and pled with this board to do something different, to look at this, the application holistically, because we have a lot of work to do in District Four. And again, I'm being asked to provide a level of grace and sensitivity, which has not been provided. So do I go off past precedent from the same commissioner? Or do I look at this area here like I would look at my own community? Talked to your commissioner, and I said, for me, and particularly for my training in land use and zoning, health, safety, and welfare is always paramount. It's always paramount to every zoning case. And there's certainly some traffic conditions which do call into question the safety of people in this area. But I'm also have to consider precedent, and I also have to consider the legal nature of the site, and that it's a site plan amendment. And this makes it very difficult because I'm very sensitive to the desire of your commissioner and also to the desire of the residents. So I'm sitting here torn, and if you were to ask me to press a button, I still don't know which one to press. You know, because I don't do, I can't do anything for spite. At the end of this day, we all work together. But I'm hoping that whatever that goes forward today, that there'll be a level of consistency with how we consider issues across the entire district. Not just because these seats are filled, because some people don't have the flexibility to get here in these seats. Some people don't have the latitude to go walk around and get petitions, but that doesn't mean that these issues don't impact their communities just as well. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do appreciate that. And I do understand your concern. And unfortunately, when this was in your district, it was four to one with you being the only one for denial. Maybe that should have been, we should have discussed that more, communicated more together. I, I'm sorry. But another similar case last month in your district, right across from the Lidl, was the Bojangles, which, and the traffic and the pedestrian traffic and the school traffic was all a concern. And I understood that completely and, and did vote with you on that one. And I just, you know, appreciate your comments.
And I think that you've got a great point here. There's a new guy on the board, and I'm trying to make some, some changes, what I hear when I talk to people based on how I got here. So I think we had a really great, full, area of discussion. And I think if we vote yes, that's to deny, and if we vote no, that's to approve. Is that understood?
We have to have another motion if it's.
Yeah, I will need to make a substitution.
Okay, so, okay, so if we, if we vote, if you vote yes, that means to deny. I just want to make sure we're voting the right way. Really, that's for me.
The motion is to deny.
Okay, so, yeah, if you vote yes, that means to deny, no, it means not to deny. So with that, I call a question. And it's, pass, motion denied, pass afforded one with Commissioner Weatherford on objection. Okay, all right, all right. Let's go ahead and take a short break before we get into the next cases, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're, we're back in session now.
And Mr. Chairman, boards, it took my attention that we can add resoning case Z-51 to consent. So I'm going to read it in, and y'all vote on adding it to consent, and then Commissioner Ock will read in the, the recommendation or the conditions, and then vote on the act. Resoning case Z-51 for Darrow Group LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to R-5 for the purpose of single-family, of a single-family subdivision, land lot 694 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Weaver Street and on the east side of Manor Street. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z-51? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
So, Commissioner.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to add Z-51 back to consent, and then we'll have the discussion on that.
Oh, okay, we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? The pass is five to zero.
All right. So my, putting it back on consent, the motion would be to include the stipulation letter from the applicant, which is dated September 11th, 2017. And then the additional stipulations, and I'm going to have to clarify, just so the board understands, number one is a minimum of 15 feet between the two houses on Weaver Street. That is the two houses that the applicant is building. The, the problem arose is that there's a house right next door to this one that the applicant did not build that is five feet from the property line because it has been a practice in the past which we're, we're trying to change, where if you have 15 feet between, between buildings, some of them may be 10 foot from one property line and five foot from the other. Well, then what happens is you get into a situation we're in here, where in order for this applicant to build a house with 15 feet between, they'd have to have 10 feet on one side and seven and a half on the other, which gets them down to 28 feet to build a house, which just doesn't work. So in essence, what the applicant's agreed to is the 15 feet between the buildings that he builds. So his houses will be seven and a half feet from each property line. Now, that results in a 12 and a half foot distance between homes, between the house he's building and the house existing. So number one is a minimum of 15 feet between the two houses the applicant will build, which will result in seven and a half foot side setbacks with 12 and a half between the existing home and the new home. Number two, stipulation number seven, he has in there setbacks are anticipated to be 25 feet front yard. We're just removing the word anticipated so that it'll be 25-foot front setback. Stipulation number three in the letter is to sod all four sides. It says front right now, so it removes the word front. Stipulation number four would be to remove, item number six, the second sentence is revised to read, will receive a protective fence installed around the drip line. And then the last stipulation is district commissioner approve all elevations. And the applicant has agreed to that, and so my motion would be to approve, as he says, Z-51 is part of the consent agenda, with all other staff comments and recommendations not in conflict.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Pass is five to zero. Okay.
So just for the, so the applicant knows he can leave now. So we're done.
All right. And, Mr. Chairman and Board, resoning case Z-37 and SLUP 7 are related cases. Would it be the board's wish to hear those together?
Right.
Okay, I'll call them together then. Resoning case Z-37, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request rezoning from PSC and ONI for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility, land lots 848, 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. Additionally, SLUP 7, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility, and land lots 848, 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. Is there anyone here opposed to these two applications? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Chairman, Board, for the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning, as well as an application for a special land use permit. And just for clarification, we're hearing these together because under the Cobb zoning rules and code, a proposal for a climate-controlled self-storage facility must also have a special land use permit approval for that use. And so really, the presentation for both the rezoning of this property to allow for the proposed self-storage and the presentation for a special land use permit are really one and the same. So it's just an efficient way to, to, to present this for your consideration. First, this is property, it's a total of 4.98 acres, it's located on Floyd Road. This property, and you have it on your screen now, just the, kind of the overview of it, has been zoned PSC since the 70s. PSC is Planned Shopping Center. It's not a zoning district or category that we even use anymore. This was a prior large shopping center, zoned into separate parcels. Our subject parcel, you can see on the screen, is the big white building. It's a big white building because it, it used to be a big white Target store just over a decade ago when it finally, when it closed, and has been an empty big white building since that time. What we're proposing. What we're proposing for where that big white building is, the former Target store, is to repurpose, a true repurposing of that building for a climate controlled self-storage facility, which we think would be an outstanding use for that particular property in conjunction with really revitalizing this end of that large retail area. And what I'm going to do is now turn to a, kind of an overview that I can point to and just give you a real quick sense of what's around this property. Turning now to the, to the board, and it's essentially what you were looking at on the screen as well, but I can point to it. Here we have our site. This is the side area for that old, empty now, 100,000 square foot Target store. This is Floyd Road, I mean Hurt Road, I'm sorry, and Floyd Road, as well as Ostel Road here. This GC is a world market shopping center. It's done well and it's existing. This is RM 12, which is multifamily. You have SC and SC adjacent and across the street. SC is suburban condominium. You have a large church here on the GC or general commercial zone property. And then you have this whole intersection of Floyd, Hurt and Ostel Road here, which is a heavily commercialized and intense area. But what's happened here with this particular tract is it just sat dormant and dark as an old Target store for a good long time. Now I was going to turn to the site plan itself. And as soon as he brings that up, great, thank you. Turning to the site plan itself, again, this is Hurt Road. This is the existing former Targets building. Again, it's simply going to be repurposed and retrofitted. We're not going to expand the size of that building either up or out. So it'll be the same sized building, but it'll be converted for purposes of climate controlled self-storage. In addition, we're going to hear after this case, a separate zoning case as it relates to the large parking field that is out in front of this, since parking of that nature is no longer needed for the self-storage. We'll maintain the single access point here. That access is existing and it must remain open. This access continues north of the, of the site into the existing shopping center that's there now. There are easement rights for that and that's the only way that trucks can access or exit from the shopping center to the north, is they must come down behind there and then exit back out on the Hurt Road. Now just turning to the last visual aid for us. What's up on your screen is the proposed repurposing and renderings for the proposed self-storage, climate controlled self-storage. And what you can see is, right now you have an old, kind of big old white building that adds no architectural character, adds nothing to the surrounding community. What we're proposing to do is do a very beautiful self-storage building with brick, stucco, glass. It will look as if it's a brand new building because it will have certainly a brand new skin, as well as the brand new insides for purposes of climate controlled self-storage. That will also involve heavily landscaping along the frontage of Hurt Road, which will tie into the landscaping, hopefully on the next case you will hear. We have a stipulation letter that's dated July 26th that takes into account the comments and recommendations that we've worked through with your professional zoning staff, as well as Planning Commission, both of whom recommended unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. We think this is a great idea to take a building, especially given the current state of the retail market, that is basically 98,000 square feet that can serve no other purpose, from a retail standpoint except to go further downhill. This is a great use, one that has very little impact from a negative standpoint, but has a great deal of impact from a benefit and positive standpoint. And with that, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those and we respectfully request your approval of both the rezoning application and the application for the special land use permit. Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize. I had some questions about.
No apologies necessary.
The SLUP and this, and this thing here, but, okay, this is Commissioner Cupid. Oh, I thought that was already asked. We have no opposition, right? Yeah, Commissioner Cupid.
Prior to Kevin's presentation, I was asked if I wanted to include presentation of Z 43 along with this application. And from the conversation I'm hearing up here, maybe that would have helped to clarify what's going on with this. So I'm going to make some reference to Z 43 as I talk about Z 37 and SLUP 7. There was an old Target that was along Hurt Road that had a very large parking lot. And the subsequent application will be for the townhome community, which will be in the parking lot area, adjacent to it, to the west of it. This particular application is for the Target building itself, which has sat vacant for a very long time. And unfortunately, attracted a lot of truck traffic, dumping, it's been a code enforcement issue. So the community was already very happy before they even learned about the townhomes that this building was going to be repurposed, just because it has sat there and just not been in use. But I'm very excited about the next application. There is one additional condition that has been added to this beyond the Planning Commission and staff recommendations. And I'm going to read that into my motion, which will soon follow. Bear with me. Okay. My motion is to approve Z 37 and SLUP 7, subject to Planning Commission comments and recommendations and staff comments and recommendations that otherwise in conflict, conflict to however with the addition of this one stipulation. The final architecture and elevations for the proposed self-storage building shall be approved by the district commissioner during plan review, with such elevations being substantially similar to those attached as part of the applicant's submission. That's the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we just going to leave him up here for Z 43, since he's already here?
Yes.
In adjacent lot? I appreciate you splitting stuff for me this time.
Yeah, split them up.
Yeah, good job. You work fast.
Resoning application, Z 43, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request rezoning from PSC and GC to RM 8 for the purpose of the townhome community and land lots 848 and 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 43? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, again, for the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of this owner and applicant in this application for rezoning. This is 7.31 acres and it looks awfully similar because it's adjacent to the application we just heard for the self-storage. This application involves essentially the old parking lot for that large Target store. As you may, can expect, when you have a nearly 100,000 square foot Target retail store built over a decade ago, it required a very large parking field. And so that's no longer needed. But what is needed in this area is a serious shot in the arm, a serious injection of new development and be it quality development. We believe that's what is bringing forward with this idea and this proposal, and that is to create, again, that, a real mixed use feeling, both from a practical standpoint and a real standpoint. What's proposed here is for a rezoning to the RM 8 category for a maximum of 51 townhomes, which would inject some quality townhomes, inject some new residential development that will serve to complement and actually continue to rise up the residential inventory and the quality of the residential inventory in this immediate area. We feel it makes for a great use alongside the self-storage and specifically when you view those surrounding uses and zonings. Yes, we don't normally convert what was a retail parking lot into residential, but I think we've all seen the development trends and housing trends that have come forward. And now this is viewed as a much more positive use of land for purposes of moving forward, particularly when you look at this surrounding area with the suburban condominiums, with the RM 12 apartments that are immediately surrounding this area. This is not injecting new density. This is simply injecting quality residential development so it can further lift that tide, lift those waves of increasing the quality of the residential inventory. Turning to the site plan itself, we'll go through that and then hit a couple of high points with you. Turning now to the site plan itself, this is Hurt Road along the bottom. Just for your reference, this is the shared property line with what is the old Target building, which will be the now self-storage, which is adjacent to this property line. What we've done is convert what is 100% parking field, and we would convert that into a very nice townhome development. Access would be in two locations. There's one access point here, which is an existing access location on Hurt Road, full access, as well as a full access out to Floyd Road here. The actual entrance will be located here. You have a total of 51 proposed townhomes. A couple of points to look for here. Number one, along the frontage, there is an existing stormwater pond that would be retrofitted and renovated. So you'll have heavy landscaping and fencing that will tie in all the way across Hurt Road. That'll be done in conjunction with, so that it's compatible and the same level of landscaping across with the new self-storage that would be there. In addition, we provided for extended buffers and will be newly planted buffers. It'll be asphalt taken up and it'll be new grass, bushes and trees, as well as completely fenced with a very attractive wood privacy fence that will add to not only the privacy and security, but will add in terms of the overall aesthetic appeal of the proposed community. Also, the way this is designed and site designed, you'll see that the access roads go around, the private road for internal goes around the outside or perimeter, adding further distance. You have all of these units back up to community open or community green space, which will be heavily landscaped with features like a community pavilion. And again, here, all these units back up to this community green space, which will be heavily landscaped as, as well. With that, I want to turn to the actual elevations of the proposed townhomes, which has been very important. This is the proposed elevations of the proposed homes. And I think when, and this is what we're speaking to, when I say what we're trying to do is continue to raise up, continue to elevate the quality of the residential inventory in this particular area. And these proposed townhomes, as you can see, utilize a combination of materials. I just want to point through so you can see what's being utilized here. These are homes that have, this is, you know, have brick and hardy shake combinations, heavy use of stone and board and batten, again, painted brick and board and batten, stone and hardy shake and so forth. And what you see is the fronts are primarily brick and stone and painted brick with those accents, complementary portions, so that you don't have an institutional all-brick look. But what you have is a high-end look of quality, especially given the use of the color palette that is here, such that it presents a very attractive, very, what we believe, quality townhome project. In addition with that, you'll notice the use of the carriage style garage doors, the double garage doors that provide for additional areas for stone and brick, again, just adding to that level of quality for the project. One of the issues that had been raised, or questions simply that had been raised, was traffic impact. And we felt that that was a good question, but one that we felt we could, we should address and easily address, and want to just put that in front of you as well, from a numbers perspective. And that is this, the existing commercial zoning for this property would allow for almost a 40,000 square foot retail site. So you, if you're looking at traffic impact, what we want to do is compare what it could be built for today without zoning versus what we're proposing. And what we found is when, through A and R Engineering, who's our expert traffic engineer and one relied upon by Cobb DOT oftentimes as well, is that when you look at trip generation comparisons, under the current zoning conditions versus the proposed zoning that we're doing, the commercial trap, traffic and chip, trip generation versus what we're proposing, you look at the two peak hours and the AM peak hour, the difference in trips for what we're proposing is 17% less difference in trips versus if you had a commercial use. The real difference, though, becomes in that afternoon peak hour. As you can well imagine, if this was a retail site as it's currently zoned for versus what we're proposing, what we're proposing would result in a 71% decrease in trips. Overall, for a full 24-hour period, the difference is, what we're proposing produces 73% less traffic trips on a daily basis than what it's currently zoned for. And we think that just by those numbers alone, it shows that what we're providing, especially when you look at it in conjunction with the minimal traffic impact that self-storage has on the adjacent piece, which the board just approved, is you're getting the best of a lot of worlds here. You're getting a real shot in the arm. You're getting high-end quality residential development that can raise that residential stock and inventory, but you're not getting the traffic impact that you already all would have under the existing zoning. We think that with this proposal, with that, with these elevations that are being provided with our letter dated July 26th, 2017, which mandates the typical types of zoning conditions you would see for a quality residential development, such as mandatory homeowners association and so forth, that this is an excellent zoning application and one we would respectfully request your approval. I'm here and can answer any questions. And also want to make sure, just for purposes of the record and for your county clerk, I'm going to hand her an eight and a half by 11 of that, of this particular one, to make sure it's included in her, her package. Thank you.
Anybody in opposition? Okay, so Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the applicant in that this is a shot in the arm for an area, and that used to be a statement made often by our prior commissioner for District Four, but it's certainly an improvement to this part of the district, which has not had new development in quite some time. And I think it highlights a level of creativity that can, that can be a positive factor in a community by looking at a parking lot and turning that into, you know, a significant residential use, which can then frequent the area of retail, particularly in these days of retail that are more challenged. I think the idea of having retail close by, I mean residential close by to retail does not only helps with improvement of this property, but also helps the viability of the retail, which is just north of this property. Didn't thank the applicant before, but wanted to thank you for meeting with the community members too and sharing this with them in advance of you coming here today. With that, I'll move to approve Z 43, subject to Planning Commission comments and recommendations, with the addition of two stipulations. First one, the applicant agrees the exterior elevations of the proposed townhomes shall be substantially similar to the attached rendering in terms of the use of colors, as well as the mixture and composition of the exterior materials, primarily brick, painted brick and stone with accent areas consisting of hardy shake, board and batten and hardy lap siding. Final architectural elevations shall be approved by the district commissioner during plan review. Second condition to be added is the applicant agrees that prior to turnover of the mandatory homeowners association to the future homeowners, the applicant shall establish a fund of the association for the future maintenance of the private streets with a reasonably sufficient amount to enable the association to fund future maintenance costs on a sound financial basis. With that, all other staff comments and recommendations are to be added, not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Second.
Give me a second. Commissioner Rock?
I support your motion. I just have two suggestions. The first one is, since there's a shopping center to the north, and I'm not talking about vehicular access, but I'm talking about pedestrian access, it would seem that it would be good to have some sort of access to the north so that folks don't have to drive to go to the store. Did, you know, we talked about not adding to the traffic there, and it would just, real simple, to have walking access out of the neighborhood into the shopping center. That's the first suggestion.
I appreciate that suggestion, and I'm sure residents there might appreciate that. I know someone representing your client is here today. I don't know if you want to confer, if you feel comfortable adding that in.
We'd be happy to have a condition that pedestrian access will be provided.
And it could even be, you know, some sort of lock gate or whatever.
Sure, it'd be secured, of course. We can provide that, so it's not...
The second suggestion, and this is something that we kind of do regularly in District Two, and I know Kevin is familiar with it, since the board can't set price points, one of the ways to set, to kind of raise the value of the properties that you're building, one is to do the exteriors like you've done. The other is to put certain conditions on the interiors, certain amenities that, and I'm gonna let, Kevin knows what the list is.
I'm listening.
Okay, so for example, some of the stuff that is standard in District Two and Conlon Area is high ceilings, 10-foot-high ceilings, hardwood floors, ceramic tile on the bathrooms, hard-surface countertops, the fancy fixtures. No, I'm not saying all of them, but I think that...
I need to go to my fancy. Nellie, could you help me with that word fancy?
Well, it's polished, it's something that's sometimes referred to as polished brush color. But my suggestion is simply to maybe work with the applicant to come up with a list of some of those or, you know.
Okay.
Because what it does is it sets the quality of the interior, which then sets the price.
Yeah. No. What we can do is just craft a broad stipulation to address the inter, the interior amenities to include kitchen fixtures and flooring and bathroom fixtures and flooring and ceiling height. Just make it broad.
And one of the things you can do is, if you don't want to make them as hard stipulations, you make them to provide a list as options that are available to the people purchasing.
That I think is much more.
And we can, we already have the additional stipulation that we have these renderings, and we kind of detailed what those qualities of these renderings were, but that the district commissioner would be, would have final approval during plan review. And that should also include a list of the provided interior options and amenities.
Okay.
So that you can know what those are, and then we can start to build that list for the future as well.
Interior options and amenities.
I just wanted to point out that I really like the landscape buffer and the great, the trees around the perimeter and even in the interior of the site plan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms.
So, we're gonna prove this for RM8, right? I'm just curious, because the planning commission recommended deletion of RA6. I just want to make sure we're doing, what's, the zoning we're proving is RM8, right?
Yes, it's RM8.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine. And the second thing is, John, this is your day. I appreciate the staff comments consistently making points to, that led up to why they made the recommendation they did. I just thought that that, since I've made issues, since I've made issues about inconsistencies in the argument, I appreciate the staff this time, you know, producing a product that led to the recommendation clearly stated in the paragraphs above. So, I just want to let you know that I appreciate that and I do recognize it. And, you know, just want to make note about that.
I'm making notes.
I did, I did notice that. Anyway, any more discussion?
With that, let me craft a condition to, to capture our prior discussion. I'll have that a list of interior options and amenities are to be reviewed and approved by the district commissioner during plan review.
That'd be, that's very agreeable and acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that'll call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving into land use permits on the agenda. LEP 16, Marshall E. Drinkard requests a land use permit for the purpose of an auto body repair shop in Land Lot 504 of the 18th District. Property is located on the south side of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queens Ferry Drive, and on the west side of Old Hal's Ferry Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 16? Let's direct you, there's one person opposed. All those registered, addressed to board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, how y'all doing? My name is Marshall Drinkard. I reside at 500 Six Flags Parkway. Before I start, I would like to let you guys know this is my first time attempting to do something like this. I've never done this before, so everything that I witnessed so far, okay, is new to me. So, I didn't come with no paper to show how the property would look in the future, but my main focus is to provide a better living for my family. I'm a hard-working citizen in my community, and I value my community look, but I do know that I am in an industrial area. My purpose is to put up a shop. I've been working on cars for a long time, since I was a child, and painting is something I do, as well as preventative maintenance, pretty much anything with a car I'm familiar with. I just want to put something up to where I can work on cars, provide for my community as well. And I'm very aware that my community cares about how it looks, and I care about how it looks as well. And I look forward to putting something up real nice and having the exterior look as well, as good as the inside. And I basically live in a, probably a .8 acre of land. It's pretty big land. I have a picture of the house, if I can show it. Sorry, my phone just cracked. Okay, I don't know what just happened. Okay, there we go. As you can see, this is mainly the front of the yard, which is a pretty big yard. And right here is like somewhat, whoever used to live there before overtime, used to drive back and forth from the road, from Six Flags Parkway to the driveway. So it's really not no paved road or anything like that, just mainly dirt. Right here on the left side is a dead-end road that leads to my neighbor's yard in the back. And I do have consent with the neighbors around me to put this together. I have went door-to-door and asked everybody for their permission, and they're all for it. They just had their own recommendations on as far as the noise overnight, which is something I definitely don't plan on doing, plan on closing at a reasonable time. And right next door to me is a trash area where it's a landfill or whatever they have next door to there, as well as down the street. There's a couple of businesses around that area that solely run out of homes, but like I was stating, this is how it looks right now, but I want to make the outside look a whole lot better. In the back of the house, you can hardly see my slab where I want to put the building net. So I don't really see it being the issue as far as traffic or as far as bothering anybody. As far as the community goes, I feel I'd be a great asset to the community as far as helping and being somebody that's less than a mile from the area to provide a great service to their vehicles for them, especially the tourists that comes to Six Flags on the regular. I'm pretty sure they have hundreds of thousands of people that come over within the year. And I think I'd be a great asset to the community, as well as that area for anybody that's coming from out of town, that may have car trouble, or anybody that's within my community that may have car trouble. And I feel that I'd be a great, a great person for the neighborhood. And like I said, it's my first time doing this, so every, the bells and whistles to get something like that going is something I'm willing to do, whatever, to meet you guys' standard, to put something like this together. I know it's just, it's not something that comes through this door every day as far as asking for permission to get done, but I'm hoping today that you guys would consider allowing me to do something like this, because I feel I could be a great asset to my community. Thank you.
My name is Robyn Meyer, and I'm the chairman of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition's Board of Directors and chair of the zoning committee as well. We very much appreciate Mr. Drinkard's interest in starting his own business and are very sympathetic to that. We have a lot of small businesses in Mabelton, and they really are the backbone of our community, and we would love to, to add him to that list. But this, the premise of using a temporary land use permit for these, for starting a business as intense as a body shop, which requires that a building be built, is something that we cannot support. The idea about a temporary land use permit typically is that it's some sort of an incubator status. It's a, it's a small business, a startup business, that simply needs a little bit of time to get on its own and get out into commercial space. Or it's something that's kind of on the edge of a home-based business, a customary home occupation, such as a small nail salon or, or hair salon. This does not fit either of those, those categories. It's true that this area, that the future land use map for this area is priority industrial with an underlying designation of industrial compatible, but this is not a request for rezoning. This is a land use permit. And if it were a request for rezoning, it would need to be in the light industrial category, or most likely be in the light industrial category, and your own ordinance prohibits body shops adjacent to residentially zoned property. So there's another issue there that, that has already been recognized, that body shops and homes don't make good neighbors. The character of this area is residential, and I have some pictures here that I'd like you to see of the neighbors around Mr. Drinkard and the street in general.
This is the first of the, first of the pictures, a view of the home directly behind Mr. Drinkard's house. You can see that it's very similar in style to his and very residential. And then this is Six Flags Drive heading north towards the subject property, which you can see is also very residential and almost rural in character. This is the home across the street, again, solidly suburban, and the home next door to, to Mr. Drinkard's property. The site plan, the site itself also presents severe challenges. It's a very small backyard. It's kind of hard to understand how a building large enough for a body shop will fit there. I think the intent is to use the existing foundations, but those, those are not serviced for, serviced by access to the side street to Hal's Ferry Road. So, a driveway, a curb cut will need to be put in. There's actually not a curb on that road, so it's a, it is a very narrow one, really almost essentially one-lane road, and the only access for Mr. Drinkard's neighbor to his rear. Access is also a problem in that this is a business that involves the arrival and departure of vehicles. Some of them will likely come on tow trucks if they are, if they need bodywork. It also involves the storage of vehicles. Body, bodywork typically does not get done in a day or two. Painting takes time to dry. It's a multi-step process. A body shop is also an undertaking that involves noxious fumes, chemicals and noise. And even though you might be able to keep some of that noise to the usual workday, it doesn't mean that the folks who live around there are perhaps not home and would not be bothered by those noises during the day. There's also a need for parts storage. If you're going to replace a fender, you got to have that fender on site. You have a, you have a used fender that comes off and has to be stored until it can be taken away to be recycled. Same for the products involved in painting. They'll need to be delivered, they'll need to be stored until, the waste products will need to be stored until they can be taken away as well. We haven't seen a plan for, for where the cars are going to be stored that are not in the building, how much impervious surface would be needed, where the driveway would be. So it's, while we, while we really respect Mr. Drinkard's hopes and plans for making this, you know, an asset to the community, it's just a little bit of a bridge too far to understand exactly how this will happen. And it's also concerning that it's, that it is not any kind of a permanent approval that's being sought today, but rather only a temporary one. So for example, if it were granted for 12 months or 24 months, which is typical for, for temporary land use permits, this investment might be made, and then in 12 months or 24 months, you would be presented with, with the request to reapprove it or continue to allow it after this kind of investment had been made, even if it were not coming up to the expectations that we had previously had. The application indicates that this is not a result of code enforcement action, but there have been code enforcement complaints about this property in the last couple of years. They're documented in your online system, and they include issues such as non-operational cars, unmoated grass and outside storage. We understand from Mr. Drinkard that his neighborhood, neighbors have indicated support. We understand that those can often be difficult conversations for both sides of that conversation to have, both, both parties to have. There's no way to know whether those, those adjacent neighbors are really happy about this possibility, or simply, you know, are sympathetic to Mr. Drinkard's situation and his desire for his own business, and simply don't want to be in a situation of saying no to the person that they're living next door to. So, we would urge you to follow your staff recommendations and the planning commission recommendations and not, not approve this request for a temporary land use permit. We wish Mr. Drinkard all the best. We have a lot of commercial property in Mabelton. We hope that his, his dream for some business comes true and that perhaps one of those spaces would be a great location. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sensitive to the applicant and the community with respect to this application, and a couple commissioners may know on this board, I have some personal sensitivity to this area because I live off of Six Flags Parkway and have petitioned this board with respect to zoning off of Six Flags Parkway, particularly with respect to the industrial parcels and leaning towards not increasing that. So in some sense, I should be recusing myself from this application. But over time, there's a level of objectivity that comes in and understanding what the various nature, various uses can be in a community, and in understanding what the various needs are of Cobb County, and knowing that this is a priority industrial area, it makes it difficult for me to reconcile my desire for this to be this cute residential corridor in Cobb County when there has been board action to designate this area as priority industrial and other areas of the county. And I'm still trying to address that issue in the county. So I'm torn here. I do side with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition in that a body shop is, is too intense for a residential area. And as was shared, our code does provide that, that use is not fitting within such an area. But in talking to Mr. Drinkard and learning about his history, and also seeing people work on cars in the area, you know, I asked him if he would entertain just fixing cars. on cars in the area, you know, I asked him if he would entertain just fixing cars as like an auto mechanic shop. Why would I consider this industrial use here? Because Mr. Drinker has the unfortunate reality of living right next to BFI Waste Services. There are very intense, noxious industrial uses surrounding Mr. Drinker. There is a beautiful home that's adjacent to him, to the west, but if we zero in on that LA property right next to it, you will see again, yes, an industrial site which has not been poorly kept, I mean, has been poorly kept. If you go behind his property, you'll see very intense industrial uses. Sorry if that's further south. If you go further down Six Flags Parkway going to the west, I know since I've been a commissioner, I've helped to ameliorate in the two L.A. properties. There used to be like a tractor truck graveyard in one of those sites. Another one of them was a very intense used L.A. site, which was non-conforming. There was a residential site used as industrial, non-conforming. And there's just a hodgepodge of industrial and light industrial uses. I want to protect the residential character of the community for those who are still established there while also seeing how we can support moving towards better types of industrial that are more compatible with being next to a residential area. And when I read his app, Mr. Drinker's application, save for him wanting a body shop, there are some other elements that show that this could be a less intense use if this were to be a facility where he would simply just fix cars because he's looking to have just two clients a day, one standard-sized truck for business, no employees, operating 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Talked to Mr. Drinker about the temporary nature of the land use permit and about the facility that he would construct and he actually showed me what the facility would look like and it is something that could be erected and taken down. So I don't think that a permanent building would need to be put up for, again, a place for you to fix vehicles, not, not a mechanic shop. So I think that could work. I also was surprised by the level of support that Mr. Drinker had from his surrounding neighbors, particularly because they're so close to a site and would be most impacted. Anyone driving down Six Flags Parkway, you wouldn't even know that this existed. So, you know, his desire to provide for his family, he has a young child and, you know, wants to do as many of us do, embark on something entrepreneurial and make a good living for our families. That's the path that he's on and it's difficult to not want to support that considering the other circumstances and particularly considering the conditions of which his house is surrounded So with Mr. Drinker, if you don't mind approaching, I'd like to ask you to... Okay, we have another commissioner's question.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know if you would consider not operating a body shop and instead operating a mechanic, I don't know what you even call it, operating the facility behind your home in a way where you could just fix vehicles comparable to a mechanic as opposed to a body shop?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, that, that would be great because that's what I actually started doing before I actually started all the body repairs. So I'm, I'm definitely a lot familiar with doing that type of work.
Okay.
So I would definitely have no problem with that.
Okay. And, you know, I read in your application that you would be looking to eventually move out of this. This, you're looking for this to be a temporary situation, I guess based on how business goes at your side.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Because with the land use permit, this not provided on a permanent basis, you have to continue to renew it.
Yes, ma'am.
But that also provides a safeguard for the community too because if you were to operate and things don't go as well as intended, even operating as a mechanic, you know, your permit could be subject to, to expiring within a short duration of time.
Yes, ma'am. I definitely am aware that, I just basically just would like to have opportunity to show what I'm capable of doing and how I can be effective for the community.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner.
I just got a couple of questions. First of all, I want to applaud you for your ambition and your vision and also doing the right thing.
Yes, sir.
There were complaints that led up to this and you're going through the process and I appreciate you doing that, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Piggybacking to Commissioner Cupid, the body shop, I know a painting requires a building and exhaust and all sorts of things to be, you know, compliant and everything. And she has more knowledge, but you are planning on putting up a temporary building to do the work in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I didn't see that in here, so unless I missed it somewhere. Then I feel much more comfortable about it if you have some way, you know, to do that. And the fact that you have the neighbors' consent, even though the Mableton Improvement Commission was kind of denying, you know, saying that, but I'm assuming if they said no, they would accept it. So I think the fact that you've got the neighbors there and, and support means a whole lot to me and, and what your vision is, so I appreciate that. So with that, I, I think that's the questions I have and I, you know, apologize, sir.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. I, I agree with Commissioner Cupid. I think without a paint booth, just a mechanic would be less intense and you do have approval of all your neighbors. But would you still, the drawing just shows the concrete slabs?
Yes, ma'am.
But would there be a building on those slabs?
Yes, ma'am.
On both of them?
The other slab is, it used to be a doghouse. So it's really like a real small, I actually have a dog on that, on that spot right there. So it's really not really big at all.
Okay.
Just mainly for a doghouse.
Okay, but you would still have a building to work on the cars inside?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I, I would support it if it doesn't have the paint booth and the more intense work being done. And maybe for one year to see how it goes instead of the 24 months.
Commissioner.
Could we see the zoning map, please? I, I agree with your direction. I think you're going, Commissioner Cupid, just a suggestion I would have, could you zoom out just a little bit? I think this is a classic example of where a text amendment in the comp plan is needed to basically say that Six Flags Parkway is your line in the sand. Because, you know, other than the two wayward LIs down there on the, the left, I think you could, you know, with staffs help craft a text amendment in the comp plan to say that, you know, you're drawing a line, Six Flags Parkway. Because the fact of the matter is, these other R20s ultimately, I think, will probably become LIs, but in that same text amendment, you can give direction as to what types of uses, looks and feels and everything else for the LIs you'd be willing to accept. And I think that would, this kind of begs for that to happen.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I had a similar conversation with our zoning manager, you know, with it being so close to residential, certainly there's a type of light industrial that is more compatible than just anything going in this area, which is what's been going on now. So certainly would like to follow up on that subsequent to this hearing. And I do appreciate the board's other suggestions and sensitivity to the community as well as Mr. Drinker. I think there's, you know, for me, there's a come-to-Jesus moment realizing what can be for this community, but what actually is there. And I think he's trying to make the best use, you know, with what's there, considering that he's willing to lessen the intensity of that to, to a mechanic shop.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that, if you don't mind, I'm going to try to craft a motion based on the suggestions that were shared here today. With that, I move to support LUP 16 for the purpose of an auto repair facility behind the residence, not equivalent to an auto body repair shop. This LUP is subject to, or this, I don't know, this LUP is effective for 12-month period. Site plan is to be submitted to the district commissioner and subject to district commissioner approval. Applicant's required to pave the driveway and any particular roadway that the vehicles will use to access, a temporary building for the repair. Awesome. If you go back to your phone, is your phone still? Never thought you'd see your phone on display like that.
Time for an upgrade.
Once he starts repairing vehicles, he's gonna repair. Mr. Drinker, it looks like the carport is not enclosed, so we'll just ask if you can just, just put something on the rear so that this building is not viewed at all from the front of the roadway.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how does that, so condition is to enclose the rear of the carport. Hours of operation are to be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And are you agreeing to five days a week? That's in your application?
Yes, ma'am. That's perfect.
Okay, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., five days a week, with one standard truck, with one standard-sized truck for business. There are to be no deliveries or outside storage. The applicant is also not to have any additional employees.
Can I ask you something, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that some of these auto repair stores or auto part stores use cars to drop off parts. Is that going to be acceptable?
Do you need, I'm, I'm not familiar with the business.
Because if you're gonna, like, for instance, if they're gonna fix a fuel injector?
Right.
You just call one of the auto part stores and they'll deliver to your house, but they don't come in a big panel truck. They come in little cars with little funny hats on the top.
I, I want to limit the delivery so he's not getting shipments every hour of the day. Certainly, I don't want to keep him from getting materials, so. So maybe I, should, are you recommending I not even put that stipulation in? That is just given?
I think, I think you need to make sure we don't have, you know, six buys going into his yard, but he still allows, it's the right term.
Maybe what you could put is no large-scale deliveries.
Yeah, no large-scale deliveries.
Commissioner Otson, thank you. Yes, he is. It's like the Cupid Otson zoning thing. But yes, no large-scale deliveries.
Okay.
Okay? For the purpose of this business.
Yes, ma'am.
You may have some.
May I, when you first started, you said not equivalent to a repair shop.
Yeah, I didn't want, I wanted to say it's an auto repair shop. See, here it says auto body, and I tried to lift language here. It says no body in the repair, just auto repair. Okay, no, okay. If you can modify that to say this is for an auto repair site, no body shop.
Okay. I'm with you there.
Thank you.
I have one question too.
Sure.
Where you have the carport, I'm thinking you want to screen from the Six Flags Road Parkway to the side there.
Just the back.
But if you close, if you close off the rear, that's not gonna hide the cars in there.
Well, he'll park his car in there. He's gonna do his auto shop.
Yes.
Behind there, on the concrete pad.
Yes, when I visited the site, you can, what I wanted to do was make any of this, all of this work to, hidden behind the home. And you can actually see the backyard through the carport. So if he just put up a screen at the back of the carport, that would keep people from looking back there and seeing.
Drive right into the garage there.
But if you screen it on the front, you wouldn't be able to see it from the road or through that panel to the back?
I, I think it would probably.
Put your phone, would you put your phone back up there?
No, I can see, otherwise you'd have to drive around the house to get to, to get into the garage. He still has a car he has to park.
Right.
He comes in from the front.
Yes.
Right. There you go.
And there's a driveway too, also in front of the carport.
Right here, he drives in. But if you screened this panel here, you wouldn't see the back or the front.
But then you'd have to drive around the house to get to the garage to park his car.
Oh, he's coming through the yard.
Yes. He's coming through this gravel driveway right here to get to his garage.
That's gravel?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Like grass.
Yeah, that's gravel back there, yeah.
Is that what you're requiring be paid?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. The driveway to the west of the property is already paved, but this area here is not.
Okay. I get it. Thanks.
No problem. Any other stipulations or changes, commissioners? Okay.
Second.
Great. Thank you.
And I just want to also commend you.
Thank you.
I think, I also want you to go tell all your friends. The other day I was having a discussion, somebody said that it's not the role of government to be creative. I don't believe that. I think we're all human beings here and we all want to do the best we can for our community. I really appreciate you working with this board and wanting to do the right thing.
Yes, sir.
I know a lot of people aren't, you know, there are some who don't, but I realize that by doing the right thing, it's gonna add more burden expenses to you. But I think in the long run, you know, this will bear out, that'll offset those earnings expenses. So I commend you, particularly working with your neighbors and getting their approval.
Yes, sir.
That, that, to me, that's a big selling point because I understand why some people have concerns about this.
Yeah.
But to me, whenever the neighbors think, think they want to help you out, then, well, all right, let's, let's all be in this together. So I really want to commend you and, but again, you've had some code issues, so you need to meet the standard.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's very important.
Yes, sir.
Because if you start showing that, well, okay, I got the approval, but now I'm gonna go do my own thing, when you come back in a year, you're gonna have to go somewhere else. And we don't want that to happen unless we have to. Okay? So, good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
So I'm gonna call the question. Pass is five to zero. Good luck. I'm gonna take my car down there.
Commissioner Cupid, your property is business.
My car needs it.
Okay. LUP 17, Family Choice Incorporated, Tasha Kennedy, request a land use permit for the purpose of a group home for six residents in Land Lot 381 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Crossing Creek Point, south of South Gordon Road. Is the applicant present? Is applicant here for LUP 17? Is anyone here opposed to LUP 17? Director, there's four people opposed and the applicant is not present, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Have, have we ever provided for persons who've come to speak to an application to speak and still continue or hold the application just to respect the fact that they've waited here till noon?
I believe we have done that, Commissioner, but the applicant is aware they're supposed to be here today. And this was denied at the Planning Commission level 4-0.
I hear that. You know, I, I wanted to continue this case. I have not met with the applicant at all, so I was looking forward to hearing from her today. In times past when I haven't had applicant present, I've continued it. So I'm willing to do that for one month out of respect for the applicant, but also out of respect for the persons who are here today to speak to the application. I would like to entertain at least hearing them speak and holding the case, yeah.
We can hear them and then we can make a move to hold. There's no problem with that.
Correct.
We can make a move to hold anytime we want to. So, yeah, so let's.
All those opposed, please come forward to be sworn in.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
Let's remind you that you all have collectively 10 minutes, so make sure you divide your time up. And so just let me know what your name is and where you live and we're ready to go.
I'm sorry, this may be inappropriate. I make a comment on the last case, just a comment very briefly, just out of respect for Mr. Drinker. It is not clear whether or not those code enforcement issues came about when he was living there. He's been there for the past two years, so. And, yeah, I just wanted...
Are we going to have to buy a new one?
Are we ready?
I'm not sure. He's talking, he's talking. Ready? Okay, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Verna Lacy Johnson King. I'm a licensed real estate agent. I live at 6619 Crossing Creek Point, which is across the street from the property in discussion today. And previous, in our previous meeting, and I understand Ms. Cupid was not present, and we do respect the commissioner's decision to move forward with a no. But a statement was made that there were no incidents during this 2015 forward time that they were in possession of a temporary permit. And as we see here, this is proof that there were incidents from there forward. And recently, the property, as she stated also before, that she was not moving forward with her lease at this time. And based on the neighbor consensus, we feel that because these incidents did occur, and she knew that she was coming up for a permit renewal, that she at that time vacated the property because there are no tenants residing there at this time. And that has been our observation, so that they would not continue with the incidents. And we see the latest incident was the last half of May of this year. So we've had various things happen. I won't go into the details since I have a short period of time, but that statement of no incidents since 2015 has been proven incorrect. Also, we had presented the last time, the letter that our present homeowners had signed off on pertaining to this incident. And I know it's here somewhere in the files, that our issue was burglaries. And one of the residents will speak further about that. And I believe she submitted the documents from the previous burglary and what happened to her property. And now I'll need the tablet back. Okay, so the initial, I guess, letters that were supposed to be sent out, we never received as we stated in the initial meeting here. We've had total confrontation and intimidation by the tenants that have resided at the property. There have been door knockings after midnight. And we are a small community. We're just a one-street subdivision. We only have 18 homes there. And we've had all these incidents of crime happen on our street. And prior to this time, there were more incidents, but they said to limit it to the 2015, so we didn't bring the additional. They can be mentioned how many phone calls were made. We've had the residents blocking our entry to our properties. They stand in the street as we're driving to our homes and basically dare us to come near them when they are clearly in the right of way according to state laws and DOT. Our insurance and property values are affected because of the fact that people are able to look at these reports. As I stated before, I'm a licensed real estate agent since 1987 and current. When people go to move into a home, they're to do the neighborhood search, also go to the government site and see if there are any absconders, any rapists, any, anything in the neighborhood. And so this information is privileged to them, and it personally affects my property. You know, the residents are, that are staying at the property are also inviting others over to the neighborhood to loiter and consistently assist them in, basically, I'm going to use the word terrorizing us, preventing us from getting to our homes in a very obstinate way as far as standing in front of the vehicles. And one of the previous residents that was here on the previous date that we met was able to state that one tenant laid down in the street to prevent him from passing to his home, which is complete obstinacy. The curfews are not enforced. And before, I didn't mention it, but I was a foster parent, so I'm not against caring for teens and, that are maybe in challenged areas. But when they start defying you, then that's when the issue is. And if the home is not able to maintain the tenants there, then it becomes a problem for us. I too was burglarized along with my neighbors while this home, this group home has existed. So there were no apologies for our diminished value. Nobody came to knock on our door. We can't replace the items that were stolen. Some of them were very special. And it doesn't matter, I, Ms. Kennedy, she had stated that, well, she's going to have girls. Well, it doesn't matter if it's girls or boys because she's had both there. And each time, we've had incidents. And so I just want to say, you know, when East Cobb showed up near Lassiter High, you know, we're a small group, 18 homes. We didn't have the presence, we're working people. So we didn't have the, you know, wherewithal to bring that many people, especially based on the storm last week, when people missed work and they had to return to work. So more was expected, but it didn't work out due to those things. So we're the working class, and we simply couldn't come out in that number that was shown earlier. And my question to her, even though she's not present, is why isn't she continuing with the four residents since that was her stated case that she wanted to care for the children? So she wanted to wait on the decision here versus just continuing to care for the four residents that the Cobb County Code allows her to do at present. So and she wants to take it to six, even though we've had problems. And according to Mass Law's hierarchy pyramid, the first need of a human being is their physiological needs. It's the basis and the largest need. And second is safety. And we are not safe in our neighborhood. You know, vandalism, theft, taunting, blocking, it's too much for us. So, and who's to say what may happen? She's saying she's bringing females. Well, females.
You're down to four minutes.
Four minutes? Okay, I'll let her speak.
Okay.
So even though it's a clean home that was stated before, a clean home can be a meth home, a clean home can be a marijuana home. So these residents are beyond the four. We're saying no.
I want to hand this to the clerk to put it as a record. Good afternoon. My name is Geraldine Crawford. I've lived at my home at 6620 Crossing Creek Point since 1989, when the community was first built. I love my home. In 2013, it was broken into. The back door was completely smashed in. Every room in my home was trashed. There were holes burnt in my carpet. Items were stolen. The most egregious was my automobile, my transportation. The cost to clean and repair my home was over the $5,000 amount. I didn't claim insurance because who wants to pay higher insurance policies? I was completely devastated by this invasion of my home and lived in fear of recurrence and retaliation. It took close to a year for the courts to finally take this and resolve the criminal act. I was not compensated for anything. There was a constant congregation in front of my home due to the fact that it was a neighborhood. We had a basketball court, you know, a basketball goal. They came out, they stood around, congregated. They would come in my yard, they would sit in my yard. That's fine. I like youth, I have children of my own. But when they left trash, or you asked them to be quiet because of loud music, they would not comply and would be belligerent toward us. So to me, the supervision was not there for these youths. By law, I know that group homes can be in any neighborhood, your neighborhood, because if they only have four residents, you don't have to be informed, and that's fine. And the only reason why I know now is because they want to change it from four to six for a land use permit. And from Ms. Kennedy's own admission, she wants it to be able to have state funding instead of just county funding. All I would like to say is, is I commend her for her, what she does, but this is not a good fit for my community. I'm at the point in my life where I'd like to be able to go out my back door or go out my front door, talk to my neighbors, and not be afraid that if I say anything to anyone that I'll be retaliated against. And it is with my strong conviction that I ask you, please deny this application. I have nothing, we can't do anything about them having four there, and I, I understand that. But for six, I just don't think this is a good fit for this community. So I ask you to deny this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, did you want to make a statement? I'll give you, I'll give you two minutes, okay?
Okay.
When we, when he comes back, we'll add it to 12 minutes for Ms. Kennedy if she, if she desires to appear. Okay, sir.
My name is Raphael Estrada. I also live in the community. I understand what you're saying and maybe extending her the opportunity to come back and speak her mind. Nevertheless, we all took time off work, and she had the same opportunity that we have to attend this meeting. She's running a business, so she should be here. Simple as that. If it's important for her, as she claimed that it's for the kids, she should have been here if it's that important. I know we're running out of time, but that's basically one of the things that I wanted to convey. And I wanted to echo everything that's, that happened and is still happening. I mean, you saw the report where she claimed there was no incidents, but all of them, basically, the last one was a theft that the police officers were investigating that they were involved in. But most of them are missing, runaways. That tells me they don't have control of the situation. They don't know where their kids are at. And we know where they're at, they're running around and bringing other people to the subdivision. Like we said, there's only 18 homes, and you saw everybody, there were 17, no, 16 signatures out of 18 homes. So that, that gives you guys a real good indication of what's been going on in, in the history behind this particular group home. Even though they've been changing the names, it's still the same people that have been running it for a long time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So that'll take the motion?
Well, I, I don't want to make a motion just yet because I'm inclined to go back on what I stated about waiting to hear this because, as I shared with the other case, that health, safety and welfare is paramount. And it's very clear that the operation of this group home is impairing the health, safety and welfare of this community and has been for some time. I'm very concerned that the applicant was not open and honest with her application in providing there were no incidents at that site. And to see the laundry list of incidents that have occurred via that report and also by testimony of those who came and spoke to us today. So I'm inclined today to actually decide on this case.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, I move to deny LUP 17.
I second it wholeheartedly.
Okay, and we have discussion. Commissioner Burrow?
If, I don't know who would know because the applicant isn't here, but how long has she been operating with the four residents? And is the house sprinkled? It is. Do we know how long?
She'll give you an answer right here.
This applicant also has a home in Douglasville, and this particular is called Family Choices. But the incident for me, it was under Haven Hearts, or Hearts Haven, I've got the card there if you want to look at this. So it's been since 2003. Now, this particular home is a rental home for the applicant. She rents this home.
Okay, so 2003?
Well, no, she says she's only been in there since 2015. That was what she said at the last meeting that we came to, I'm sorry.
She was there before with somebody else.
I looked her up, and I did see Family Choices in Douglasville. I didn't realize she was associated with Haven Hearts, which has come before the board and been denied in the past. I think it was like my first year I was here. I do have a question for community development with respect to some of the.
And she also has one in Decatur.
In Decab?
Decatur.
Decatur.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Dana. As was shared, someone is able to operate a home with four persons without getting an actual land use permit, is that correct?
If they, if they are sprinkled, correct. And the farm marshal will verify that and let us know prior to providing them their business license to operate.
With the amount of incidents that they've had at this property, can there be a way of addressing her current operation beyond the, the application for the?
I think the best thing to do is I can sit down and talk to some of the neighbors after the meeting, and we can, between the county and the neighbors, probably send a notice to the department, the Georgia Department of Human Services, and let them know that they have an individual who is not properly operating their group home. And we can ask the state to get involved at that level.
Okay. I would ask for your assistance, and I'm primarily going off of that report of incidents that was there. I presume that's a Cobb County report, but anything that we could use that.
Probably from public safety.
Provides some validity, because I don't want this to be my word against yours. All right, thank you, Dana. Appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second for a discussion. Call a question, and it's passed five to zero to deny. All right, with that, we're done.